Oh boy. Trying to keep myself organized.
I hope the commissioner's not being overwhelmed.
They will.
We always have.
I appreciate you. Evero best.
You guys are there to slang your name.
Yeah, don't get too comfortable with it.
Morning. First, right before the meeting, I spilled coffee on myself. Yep.
Here's the other one.
You found it?
Yeah. Don't need that one.
I didn't find it.
Check your calendar.
There?
Oh, you did find it. Okay, so it's a one pager. Yeah.
Okay, I'll call the Mr. County Commission being to order. Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the Republic of which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any additions to the agenda?
I would like to make an addition to Alice's area, the HR update director. If we could put EM in there too, please, I would appreciate it.
Add EM in there?
Yes.
You'll have to remind me again. I got it written in there. Any other additions? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll move to approve. Jamie?
Yep.
I'll second.
Rick or Travis?
Rick.
Any further changes? Hearing none. Jamie?
Hi.
Rick?
Hi.
Travis?
Hi.
Miza?
Hi.
Jeanne? Approval of the minutes? Of the June 5 meeting, right? Yep.
Yes.
I just had one question on the minutes. When we have that resolution in there?
Yes.
Is it, so you just typed it out, or did you paraphrase it?
No, no, I took it from the document. So that is what you guys approved. And that is what we signed.
And that's how we normally do it in the minutes, we print the resolution?
Yeah, they want the whole thing in there as a resolution.
And that was what you like amended or changed in the minutes, correct? Like you said on a first?
No, that was in the original minutes.
What was the change then?
The only changes I updated were Jen told me she wanted her portion regarding her hearing for the assessments reworded.
Okay.
It was just reworded, and that's what I wanted Jen to do. Because this is something the state has to see and chance of going with it. So basically, that was the change.
Okay.
And I highlighted, bolded the resolution.
Well, and that's, I didn't notice what the change was because it wasn't.
And that's why I sent it out. I want people to give me feedback so I get it right.
Okay.
Documents.
I'll move to approve as presented.
Miza, I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Travis?
Hi.
Miza?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Rick?
Hi.
Jeanne, hi. Review and approve options. For those of you who haven't necessarily been here before, we go through every bill. Takes approximately a half hour. And so you can chat with your neighbor or whatever, but we'll be going through every bill. Takes about a half hour.
And please make sure that you sign in if you haven't done that. So there's a sign in up there too.
Okay, I got the same thing. It wasn't timed. I thought that we had done it right on time.
Damn, the clock is to me it's fast.
Having it on a Thursday. The EM, under HR updates and HR director, put EM.
Have you received any documentation for this?
Oh, no.
So you see these?
I guess so.
Very important. What was that? There was a plaque there.
Yeah.
Right there.
This?
Yep. And in the?
But that's, that's the one?
That's what I got. She said that it was to get Jen.
Oh, I know that's the cask.
No.
Okay.
Do they use it for roads?
Okay.
Then why?
I thought it was like a water spring or something.
Carmen?
Yes.
Do you know why we have a water belt in the city of Beala for the 911?
Yes. That is county shop used the water to do gravel.
But why is it coming by 911?
Turnus and stuff.
Oh. You know that the county road department, isn't that turnus? Yeah.
And it came to Mercer County 911.
Yeah, and it does. Because that is what we use to fill up those trucks.
Is this a road account or is this?
No, if he signed it, it's the sheriff. That I have to.
Why would the sheriff's office be paying for water?
Well, they are the 911 too. It'd become an auto.
But why is 911 paying for water at our roads?
Well, okay, so this might be something.
I think we need to hold that until we get clarification.
Yeah.
I'd like to hold that till we get clarification.
I'll find out.
Where does that bill go?
It's right before this one.
Okay.
Here.
I got a big.
Just seemed weird to me.
I didn't even catch the 911. I just thought it was like Brad Spring.
Right, and if it was road department, I would be like, oh, okay.
Already been weeped.
Yeah. That threw me out. I'm fine with it.
Campus in more on Monday, right?
No.
It's usually like 13 days after the auction, so.
Okay, thanks.
I don't have it on my calendar, so I'm. Forgot to put it on there. I guess I should not miss that.
We're having a bill in front of this moment. We're gonna take a clips at it, so.
It was being Monday.
It's coming Monday.
Yes. Here, here.
Okay, 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 okay. That was another question I had. I actually remembered it. Because I didn't put it off.
So we, we're asking clarification on.
Yes. Here. What kind of order? Does it trump your accounting?
Okay.
I just don't know because I'm like. Honestly, I don't.
Right.
Oh, unless you want your rice, Janet.
Are you sure?
Just saying.
Time is money. There goes another one in there. Doesn't count.
It's a longer process. Fifteen hours?
Carmen, you wanna make sure everybody got the sign in sheet, please? They did give them ice cream bars of memorial, but you can't follow some sound.
Rick? Is there a reason why we're paying Lakeview to haul gravel when we have the belly dumps and stuff?
We added three trucks to, so we can get, we weren't keeping up at all.
Oh.
We, we had, when we did our bids, we had a, we hired a contractor for two weeks.
Okay.
That's what the, I see he asked you if you could do one more week, and I think that then we're gonna be done with it.
Okay.
Especially when they were going way down on South End at five and seven.
Carmen? Is there a reason these two for the registrations were sideways? They were opposite? Okay. I mean, just like these plates for the new vehicles, but they were sideways compared to everything else. Okay, well, it's for one dingo and the pick.
Yeah.
Questions.
When you get to hold that, you get a collection thing. Is there like an overhaul?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
I asked you that once before, but.
Yeah, we will.
Just kids like the overall way up there. You're not here.
I thought it was like, no, speaking of times.
Well, that's, I don't know.
Yeah, because you think.
I know.
No, I don't know why they did the half month. I don't know why they did the half month, but.
As you say, as far as I know.
He's never left. He's making friends over there. Just saying.
Why?
Yep.
This one too, it's like, it came in about 5,000.
Yeah, I was just wondering if something happened to one of our belly dumps or something like that.
That's almost the cost of what we paid for the trailers themselves.
Yeah.
Then pay another company to do it.
Well, we have, we have all six of them going.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
Backwards check.
I talked to him this morning too, but.
Did you have a hand up? Okay. Sounds good. Thanks.
Okay, sounds good, thanks.
I don't see why not. What's that?
I should get all the paper and everything.
The only thing if it's like redacted from attorney or something like that, you know, a name or something, you know, like when you see a blacked out.
Like, are we talking about him over there?
Well, just, he was just asking if the bills were confidential.
It's also public records, it's housed there, so it's all public record either side of it.
Right, the only thing I said like when you have certain cases and it's.
Then it's why it's redacted, but.
We wouldn't see it either.
You could go look on their website right now. It looks like they charged like the one twelve for like this month and then like would have been some last month, but there's still the five months on the 18th. But that was probably at seven.
Our following agenda items are not time sensitive, so we're going to keep on with the bills for now, they're almost done.
Charlie question.
Charlie. Tell me about this one, I don't know.
We're wondering if that's counting twenty seven or.
It's twenty seven, we've got an interstate, I think it's built, but it's mailed in.
Yep.
Which one is that, is that one they did twenty seven?
Twenty seven.
They were the contractor.
I think it was.
Yeah, so what do we have, we have like four thousand dollars that we, what was that for?
From the final.
From retainage or?
Retainage and the final, yeah, like you don't pay everything out until the state finally accepts it. So we, whenever, we just listed it in the final and I like, I want to say back in like February or March. Actually might have been, might have been just April, it's in the final, I forget, takes a little bit of time.
I was just curious how it works, so I.
So you'll see this can be thrown through the shield bridge.
No, don't say that word.
County one bridge.
Oh, okay, so that is the, it is, it's water that the county road department uses. I still don't understand.
Probably what we have set up in the system.
Yep, we got it set up to fill those tankers.
I know we fill water on the road, on the road, well, they did have, that's what it was for, but I, I have no idea why it would be nine one one rather than the roads.
Well, but.
That's only neither, but that's what it was for.
That's because that's what we have set up with the city to fill those tankers that are easy to do.
Oh, so they do them for the use of for fire protection.
Right, and before that, it was written by the one that we use those tankers for, and you guys have been using a lot of the tanks.
So it's always been that way because the road department used to fill tankers?
The road departments never used that to fill those tankers, but I don't think they used them in the past to do roads until now.
Yeah, we, the water roads and that.
They used to when Roy was there, they did fill tankers with water, so.
They just take a different account.
This nine one account happened just a few years ago when we set those.
Right. On the bill, put a new account number?
Just on the voucher, right? Yeah, we'll just.
Okay.
Oh, okay, then I'm fine with it, okay, thanks, fun.
Thanks.
Here's where the paper clips.
This is where that, where that paper clips that goes in front of it. Yeah.
And you know, the fire protection, yeah, what if I was using it for really, it actually comes over there.
Either add a new count or somehow you do the same, you said it goes against the road, but.
Right.
But they did, when Roy was over there, they used to water it up, so this is like, this is the first type of tank that's going to go.
It's the water road.
I know that for a fact, so.
When I saw it, that was, it came to mind, because I know.
I, I thought it was Brad, me, right, but then I was like, well, why is it coming out of nine one one?
I thought, I thought Brad threw his water piece for spraying, is what I thought it was for initially.
Well, yeah, it was originally set up under that, so, when it gets filled, shows Mercy County. If it was your checkbook, you'd just read the check and go out.
Well, the city of Hazen is just like our system, so you just keep track of how many like loads or gallons you fill, then you go into city hall at the end and like pay us, I'm like. The share you all dangerous, we dealt seven thousand plus gallons at a time, we go like putting market in the spring for you, then we go into Tammy at the end.
Well, until twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen, and really you still don't let your meters in.
True, yeah.
A lot of people are upset having to do like something after a year because they got.
Now that we have like Southwest water for cows, we don't have a water bill. Water bill, crap, don't shut it off for the cows. They do need water.
I just wanted to reflect, just that way we need to do something. It may be a little petty, but there's a reason. Right, it just was like, wait a minute.
Four thousand gallons, and then about thousand, forty five, that's not a big deal, but you use a hundred thousand gallons.
Right, I don't know if it's cost, yeah, no, we were on.
I don't even know who that is, I don't know who that is.
Jean, when has that ever stopped you? When has that ever stopped you?
At this time of year.
Yeah. Gone for my training and he called, I was in South Dakota, so it was like six in the morning, I'm like, why are you bothering me when I have no kids and I'm sleeping, and I'm saying the whole time. Oh, yeah, he's like, oh, you have no kids, and I'm like, thanks, ruins.
No, not now.
Yeah.
Just like the kids.
I'll move to approve the bills as presented.
I'll second it.
Travis, Rick, any discussion on the bills? Harry, none, Travis?
Hi.
Rick?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
Jean, I. Okay, Sonia, I'm not, I think it's Duchuk.
I brought, oh, I was gonna say you brought your bra.
Yeah. Well, thank you for your time, my name is Sonia Duchuk and I'm with the Beulah Park District, today I would like to kind of present a potential walking trail that we would like to do out at the Beulah Bay area.
That was my assumption, so.
Sonia, is this like for a request for that Parks and Lou fund that we have?
No, it's not, I'm not requesting anyone.
Okay.
Well, we like you even more than.
Continue.
I knew I liked you.
And that was going to be my question, are you requesting funds?
Nope.
What are you requesting?
I'm requesting just approval to move forward on this plan because it is out in that area, the county area. I, just starting here, if I need to go to planning and zoning, I certainly can, but because it's county roads, off of the county road, it's going to be completely separate from the walkway, or from the roadway out there.
So you're going to, you're going to be within the easement area of the road?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, continue, sorry.
No, you're fine, so the park district is in support of this and we're just here to get the support from the county. A couple changes that I just want to point out right away is the green portion and the blue portion, we are going to be taking out as of right now. Just with funding and the extent of this trail, we're going to wait on those two sections. But if you are familiar with the Beulah Bay recreational area, you know, in the past five to seven years, it has grown not only with residents out there, but with recreation itself. And it has become more of a safety concern now with the residents out there and our campers that are going back and forth from Beulah Bay campground and to Dakota Waters. So with people walking on the roads every morning and I have had a place out there for twenty plus years and myself have walked out there with my kids on bikes and, and whatnot, but just with more of the residents moving into the area, we're seeing a lot more foot traffic, the people walking and biking. And the concerns that we have with the park district is just the safety part of it. I would love to say that when people are going back and forth from Beulah Bay to Dakota Waters, they have not been drinking, but I would be wrong on that. And I'm surprised and thankful that no one has gotten hurt or hit, but it, it could be easily anytime that that would happen. So this would be on the top, we also have it as a phase one, you know, reaching out to Hazen and Hazen Bay, you know. They, and it being in Mercer County, well, if Beulah Bay recreational gets it, why can't we get it, which is why we called it phase one also. I would have no problem helping out another group that would be interested in taking over, you know, that area, but as right now, the park district is just focusing on this area.
So who pays for this, Beulah Park and.
The park district would take it on, we would obviously as a nonprofit, nine ninety, we're going to go for grants.
Okay.
We'll start with that, and donations also, within the walkway, we'll have benches and at the beginning and end of it, we'll have, I don't know, a donor wall or some kind of showing of thank you for those that have donated.
And your preliminary thoughts and or engineered specs here, is, would this walking path be like on the shoulder or further off down in the ditch or up on the?
Kind of where I was wondering.
So it would have to be outside the clear zone of the road ring and that automatically probably puts you on the backside of the, your back slope, I guess, your dish.
On the top of your back slope away from the, okay? Yeah, because right away, concern was speed and traffic and. I know our county sheriff's sitting in here right now, but the way, the speed limit up there right now, and then we start having foot traffic and try to reduce the speed some more, oh my gosh, we're going to get a lot of feedback on bringing that down to like fifteen miles an hour. He's going to be busier than heck up there at that point, so that would have been my only concern is, but if it's up, up off the back slope, then that, we shouldn't have to worry about that.
So that's a great point too, so there would be, I think, about four crossings on the road ring?
Well, I see the ones right down there, but Dakota Waters, and that's a real tight curve, you're not going around that at forty miles an hour anyway.
Would, would it happen in the recovery for the next morning signs, so when, when the lights aren't flashing, it could still go the normal speed?
But you do cross down here by the turn that goes into, I don't know, the loss.
There, yeah, right, right by.
Well, your blue line.
Yep, Homestead, there would be that crossing.
That would be north of Jay's place.
Yes.
Back into Hafner's there, I think it's called, oh, there's Mr. Hafner sitting here.
Yep.
Sorry, I couldn't think of your name. Getting old.
The other option you could do there too, and this is obviously from here, you could stay on the north side of the road and cross over that, that road, we have said crossing over Beulah, Beulah Bay road, I guess.
Right, yep.
And not cross until you get down there by Dakota Waters, then access to Dakota Waters, then everything would just stay on the north side, you know.
You eliminate two of them that way anyways.
Right.
So most of the funding is, you're going to look for grants and, well, this is way outside the Parks and Lou, but.
Right.
Just a little bit.
Yeah, so there is a lot of recreational trail grants out there, so we'll start obviously with that and then we'll go to donors and, and see where we're at. We don't have a timeframe, I mean, obviously sooner the better, we could get this going, but it is a big project that we are willing and wanting to take on, so.
Does this have to go through City of Beulah at all? Does City of Beulah have anything to do with it?
Told, no, no, because it's out, yeah, we have no, the Beulah Bay campground is completely separate financially, we don't get any mill levies or anything out there, so, no.
Well, I'm, I would definitely not be opposed as long as we're not going to do a major incursion on traffic or.
Landowners or anything.
Yeah, as long as you can deal with the landowners and or, well, I guess when you're in county right of way, that's basically what you're asking for is permission to use county right of way, I, as long as you're away from the road, I, I know.
From a legal standpoint, the county encouraging this to go through is a good thing. Pedestrians and bicycles don't mix with cars and pickups.
And that's a very tricky road.
And I am familiar with that road, I do use it, it's a narrow road, and I have come across pedestrians walking and biking and you end up having to yield and tell incoming traffic and, you know, it's, it's, it is a good, good plan, and like I said, I'm not opposed to it.
So do we need this to go to P and Z and water and?
So your request is to use, have the commission give you permission to use the county easement, but no financial obligation at this time.
At this time? At this time, yes.
As long as I said at this time.
Yes.
I'll make a motion then to approve it as, as Jean presented it. The county right of way use for this walking trail.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Kinda onto Jamie's question about planning and zoning. Typically road stuff, we don't send to planning and zoning, but if there was some type of feature or something like that or...
And just 'cause that area is the hot topic of water board all the time, nothing with water board?
That's why you already mentioned the drainage things.
It shouldn't impact the water board.
Okay.
'Cause this is above ground and you're not going into any holding ponds or...
Right.
Okay, any further discussion? Harry Nun, Rick.
Hi.
Travis.
Hi.
Liza.
I.
Jamie.
Hi.
Jean, I. Go build your walking path.
Well, work on it.
Beaver Forward.
Yeah.
Mercer County Beaver, Beaver Rick, Mr. Brinkman.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm here this morning to take and ask the commission to consider allocating three mills to Mercer County Economic Development. We then in turn would issue about fifty, one hundred thousand dollars of that, depending what the mills come out to, to Beulah JDA, Hazen JDA, and Stanton JDA, leaving approximately fifty thousand dollars left for Mercer County Economic Development. The goal is to have all four of these entities work together to create economic development in Mercer County and along in their adjoining cities. I will provide a written formal request to Carmen next week. I just wanted to bring it in front of you today to allow you to consider it. I'm not asking for approval today. After you review the written request, then I'd like the opportunity to come back and answer any questions for you. I, I feel funding, this funding, these three mills is probably one of the few things that would be, if approved and then, and inserted in the approved county budget, would be one of the few things that could take and provide a return on investment to the county and to the cities. By doing this, we open up more opportunities to receive grants and pay for matching parts of grants. Usually they're eighty-twenty, so there needs to be a match to that. And also take and promote Mercer County, both on a state level and our county level. Right now, there's not, we don't have much promotion except that comes from the cities and from a few organizations. That's one of the goals for, we get, is to take and create a website and start marketing our county. With that, that's all I have. Can I answer your questions? Or like I said, I will get a written request to Carmen next week.
Doesn't this have to go to the voters?
That's what I feel. And also, it's not just the four organizations. We've got six communities across this county, so...
'Cause like for the extension office member, we had to put it on the ballot for the voters. Wouldn't we have to do that?
Part of, part of what he's working on is how you would create a JDA because economic development can't mill. It would be through a JDA. There's more information that he'll be providing, but at this point, he's just asking for us to consider it in the preliminary budget. When he provides the additional information, so I get where you guys are coming from on how this works, but...
We can have that discussion.
That's what I was thinking. It's like, oh, it's gonna look in the prelim and stuff.
Right now, you're just providing us information.
Correct.
Okay.
So there's a lot of information to go through, so.
All right, anything else? Thank you.
And I would say that this is probably the only way the smaller communities in our county are ever gonna have a voice. So.
Okay.
It is advantageous for them, so.
We'll consider it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Planning and zoning.
I think Jenny's in the back.
There she is.
I'm gonna...
I'm looking for Jenny.
Yeah, I'm gonna step down 'cause I'll be on that end of it.
So you're gonna recuse yourself?
Recuse myself and...
Okay. And that's this right here.
This one, this agreement, together again.
Correct, Carmen?
Yes.
Both of them?
Yep.
Okay.
This is, is that too? I think so.
Usually we got... All right, this is a little different, so. I'm used to using, I'm used, used to seeing zoning case number and that's what I was looking for. Okay, thanks. Go ahead.
This'll be for zoning case twenty-four dash zero five dash zero one. This is the application for Bruce Koblonsky for approval to rezone a parcel of land from ag district to commercial for a recreational vehicle park and storage building. Also included in his application is a conditional use in the commercial zone district for a proposed RV park for one hundred...
Seventy-nine, one hundred sites?
Yep. Seasonal camping spots and a storage building. The parcel of land is owned by Jim Casper and is located approximately fifteen miles north of Beulah. The proposed project would consist of thirty-seven point two acres within the northwest quarter of Section Four Township one forty-six north, range eighty-seven west of the fifth primary in Mercer, Mercer County. Jim Casper has given written, notarized permission for Bruce to develop the land. Planning and zoning is recommending the zoning be changed from ag to residential R-five rather than the proposed commercial that Bruce had applied for. The board felt that R-five was a better fit as the main focus is for a recreational park. The board also wanted to make sure there was going to be no drainage issues, so they did approve the case contingent on approval from the Water Resource Board.
Did you get approval from the Water Resource Board yet?
They basically said that they weren't, you know, who was it, actually, I don't know, the Water Resource Board, as the case was back to... You guys made a motion on that? You didn't make a motion?
No. It was not approved at the water board.
I'd like, I'd like to have the Water Resource Board approve it before we take any action. Any, any other commissioner have comments?
I would agree with that.
Well, I just think, I mean, I called, I did a little bit of research on this and I called an engineering firm with Ward County and they put a campground in up there and in their opinion, we omitted a few steps along the way that we, I think that we should, not saying I'm opposed to it, I'm just saying that I think it's the right idea, but I just think that we need to put a little bit more work into it before we approve it, put it that way. I think we're, I'm not opposed to it, like I said, but I'm not ready to vote today on approving this, but in my opinion.
I'm not opposed to it either, but if it's contingent on the Water Board's approval, I don't think there's any reason for us to vote on it until we get approval from the Water Board.
Right. We'll just postpone it until we, until the Water Board...
Has a decision.
Has a decision.
Or, yeah, comes, brings their decision. Not saying we're opposed to it, just saying I'd like to have all the entities first approve it before we approve it. I don't like approving something contingent on someone else's approval. Let's get all the other...
Well, and I think too is like, Travis, you said too, is like, one of the things you look at is that it's certain ti, you know, certain part of the season, that's gonna be the third largest city in Mercer County, you know, and then, I mean, it's just that, you know, we have to maybe get the horse in front of the cart and make sure we keep it there. I mean, that's like, I don't think that we're doing it wrong necessarily. I just don't know if we've done everything that we needed to look at yet, so that's, that's where I'm at.
And we have a tricky spot within our codes. As far as the Water Resource Board, when they look at, when they're looking at subdivisions, which means you're actually creating lots for sale when you have an RV park that you weren't running, there's no lot for sale, so there's not actually a subdivision. So, it's, it's a development or it's not a subdivision. Water Resource Board is talking about a plat. If there's no lots actually created, there's not gonna be a plat, so it's kind of a gray spot within our codes.
Will they have septic set up though, for this?
They'll have...
Right, water and septic to all the sites?
Correct.
You know, I don't know.
And I feel like the Water Board is a hot topic up in that area, so I think, I still stand by, I think we need the Water Boards.
Yeah, there's some contention about a half mile south of this, but...
This area flows away from them.
Is this all RV parking?
There's a hundred yards. Four half acre spot where he's reserving spots for storage units.
I'd say it's storage too, right?
Oh, but there's, there's not, these aren't like residential lots or anything. This is all RV, like an RV campground, okay. Okay, I needed to be corrected there. I thought some of this was going to be, all right? And, there is no, nothing about road maintenance in that area, is there? We're not gonna maintain the road in any of this. Okay, that's another hot topic in our county lately.
He's looking at a thirty foot wide corridor that's not gonna be getting anything, but it's twenty-four feet wide travel. It'd be at grade because we can't say two oh one inches.
Is there a current access point that he's gonna, that's going to be used?
Off of one of our county roads?
Yeah, off of that, I think it's considered Beulah Bay Road.
All right, we all know, we all know the road, okay.
As far as the designation of it, that there's an existing approach and driveway that all the accesses on the south will go and then they're looking to access approaches on the north end. It doesn't look like you guys have the actual layout of the...
So, to question it again, are you, are they looking at adding any access other than what's there already?
We're looking at adding accesses on the north end.
And this'll just be camp sites for campers. There won't be actual mobile homes moved on those sites. Just RV, 'cause the way it's worded in ours with the mobile home park district makes it a little...
When you look at our code...
Like I'm picturing West Acres or Happy Acres where there's mobile homes, but this is a camping.
So, like I said, our code is a little in Ranger Grade when it comes to these, but our file district is the preferred district for campsite. But that also gives a mobile home district. This is kind of one of those things where in our codes, we should probably look at some clarifications, but developments like this.
I think you're right.
I would also like to see the access roads addressed also separately. We had a county resident build an access road onto a county road and we made him tear it out because it didn't meet our specifications, so if we're gonna add any, any in here, let's make sure that it meets our... In your drawing, I'd like to make sure that, that includes those, that design work, that it meets our engineering specs.
Yes.
No, access to it. Off the county road, that we make sure it meets all the, not that, not that Jean Wolf goes up there with his loader tractor, dumps five loads of dirt in a ditch and calls it good and then all of a sudden we got drainage problems and so throw myself under the bus there. So I wanna make sure that's addressed. And then the current access to make sure it's adequate to handle, there's not gonna be a lot of traffic, you know, two-way. It should handle two-way traffic, so is there gonna be some widening needed on the current access? Not saying I'm against this, but we need to make sure that not down the road, I, I hear all about how we gotta improve the access and there's another road and we're fighting over that and I'd like to have that all taken care of upfront, so let's get the Water Board and let's make sure our access points are adequate.
I think another one that we should look at too is, you know, like there's been some concern from the neighbors and things like that up there about how this is gonna look and what's gonna happen and I know there's gonna be opposition to anything that we do, but I think we have to spend some time and see what we can, you know, blend some of these issues together too. We're gonna do this and that's it. I think I should take into consideration some of that.
Do we have a consensus at the hearing, Carmen?
Not a hearing. No, it's just under planning and zoning, like we normally do.
'Cause at the P and Z level, we had a hearing before and we had public comments, so I was making sure we're on this in the steps.
Yeah, I was going from P and Z, there was some...
And P and Z was aware that Water Board hadn't given step of approval?
Yeah, 'cause it said contingent on Water Board.
So, in this agreement here, or I don't even know if this is considered an agreement, it's a proposal. Let's put it in. I'll call it a proposal. The setbacks, are those the setbacks that are required right now or is this an amendment?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, this is... Wait, I haven't seen this before, so I'm reading it real, trying to read it real fast here. Setback requirements, but it says front yard, side yard. Okay, on state and federal highways. Is that the current?
Are you looking at this, Jean?
That you're not building a campground and putting a lot ten feet off our county road. I'm, I'm being way not, but you know what I mean, encroaching on the county road, that our setback to build anything, you can't build right up to the easement. There's still a setback off the easement, I...
This says minimum of a hundred feet from lot lines fronting on county roads.
Is that what it currently is? Or is this in there?
Does the setback requirement go with...
What I'm getting at, is that what the requirements are currently or...
That came from Jim.
Correct. Oh, from Jim. So these aren't our current setbacks, okay.
But does the top of this go with the previous subsection and we start at E here? I think this goes with page two, is a continuance of page two and page three starts at E. Yeah, so these setback requirements at the top don't pertain to subsection E.
Could you look at that?
Right here, yeah. Planning and zoning is recommended.
No, I don't wanna, I don't wanna a campground being built and encroaching on our road up there, where we have campers within, you know, fifty feet of the road.
That doesn't talk about setbacks.
Setbacks, sorry.
But not from the county road. I think we just need some more clarity and we need something from the Water Board.
Just one point. I'm looking at the plots and labeled on, I guess it would be the second page, first page of interstate drawings. We've got a great deal of drain fields throughout that, so I think the commission legally needs to get Water Board's approval. And looking at this, I also see one, two, three porch approaches to the north that are in drain field areas. And that's gonna require some work for... And that's going to require some work for drain through, so we don't increase, increase volume and velocity downstream. So, my advice to the commission would be to table this till water board approves.
Yeah, I think we have quite a, quite a few questions we'd like answered, so let's, we'll postpone it. We can postpone it till the next meeting, and then if you.
Water board.
You just postponed it till water board approval.
Is the water board meet before our next meeting?
No.
Okay.
I attended.
So we'll postpone it indefinitely, let's do that, and then you can, you can call the auditor's office and make arrangements to be on the agenda. How's that?
To help move this along, I'll give R.K. for a call here later today.
Okay. Alright? So, so done unless I need a motion to postpone it.
I'll make a motion to postpone until water board approval. Hold on. Postpone until water board approval.
Do you want a second?
Liza, second.
Any further discussion? I think we discussed this one. Hearing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean, aye, motion passed. Let's take a five-minute recess.
One more, Jean, Jean's got to sign something. Sarah, she keeps emailing me and Jean to sign something. Sarah the highway gal. Sarah, Suzie, Sarah Suzie, you know her. We gotta get Jean, Jean to sign it for this, to sign this along. Okay, I will not, I'll make a note, and I'm going to forward it to you. Because neither of you have him, Suzie, do it. Okay, yeah, because I know it was something really. It was a contract. I, I will email it to you as soon as I get that.
That's fine.
I can do it right now. Okay. Yeah, you can do this. Let me run and look really quick.
Sure.
Because he's, all we need is certification. He's, Jean, he's going to give us a quick update on county road twenty, so we'll have a couple minutes for. Right, give you certification. There's an update on county road twenty. And then I do have, they're going to look at it, so you're getting dash cams. Once we get it working on it, then.
Yep, Charlie?
I'll find that email.
I got the email sent to you, and then he wants to talk to you.
Yeah, talk to me after the meeting.
There's a contract number on it.
Because I did, I did get a PDF from Sarah, but I just hit delete. I get those damn things, I'm not, I don't even read them.
Yes, you did, it's probably in cancel.
Right, ten thirteen, so that's six minutes. Alright, we'll get the meeting back in order, as best as I can. We're down to highway department, correct?
Yeah.
Hey.
Highway department? They have to approve this?
That's a road certification, Al already said all you have to do, he has to, he has to sign it and you have to mail it in by the first, is what I was told.
Oh, okay, so you guys don't need to prove it, we just.
Well, we can.
Sign it, we need a meeting.
What is it?
What is it?
It's road certification to the mile.
County township.
That's the.
That's what we do every year.
Yeah.
Certification of the county road.
Is it got anything to do with how many miles we hope we have?
Yes.
We get paid for it.
Yeah, and it's, I can ask for a motion to approve it.
They use it to, they use it to basically confirm CMT routes versus non-CMT routes and funding, when they package that together.
In a nutshell, it just certifies how many miles of road we have in the county.
So how many miles of road do we have?
We can get.
Six hundred and what?
About six hundred and seventy or eighty?
Six hundred and eighty-eight miles of gravel?
But this is for all the roads.
That's for all, that's our certification, that we get paid for on it, so I don't know if you need it, you didn't, what he said, you need to sign it and it has to be mailed in by the first.
I guess to make it all nice and legit here, I'll ask for a motion to approve our.
Approve the certification that Al already presented.
Can I see it, please?
Yeah.
Thanks, Jean.
Right, I do. I don't like the phrase "we do it every year."
Well, so far I have a, a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second, and then.
There, now we can.
We'll let discussion and review.
Now we can do discussion, yeah. Now I'll give you the copy so you can review it. Try and follow some orderly business conduct. Meeting etiquette, whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, they should all be listed as unorganized.
It's under the staple.
Is it, okay, no, I'm just saying it, if it says, if it says organized, that's wrong.
It's unorganized, it was just.
Under the staple.
Good, yeah.
It's on the other ones too, there's Dunn and Stark and Morton and.
Because it, it column D is marked, list other counties, or counties that it might touch too, I think is what it is.
That's how, that's how I read it.
That's my interpretation.
So it's got a lot of townships in there.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, Rick?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean, aye, motion passed. Where do I say? Putting our trust in Alroy that he has the right mileage. I'm not going to check him all. Oh, Rachel, oh, it's Alroy's name on there. Okay, continue with our highway department, we have some more?
Yeah, I figured, today I had a couple, the contracts to drop off, Todd's looking at them right now. The contractor's assignment, got them back for the airport code, so all we need is to execute the contract, get county signature, and then those are ready to go, I'm guessing they'll probably, they haven't given me a start date on that yet, but I'm assuming August, it's just an assumption.
Okay.
Usually they want to try to start sometime in there, but.
Okay, to review that again, we're going to pave up to the entrance into the airport, which is about a half mile, three-quarter mile, I'm not sure. And then we're also going to do some resurfacing on the airports portion, but they are, the airport is going to reimburse us for that.
Correct.
Okay.
And there's going to be improvement to the last portion of that road too.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, gravel improvements to.
The remainder of the one mile corridor.
Okay. Just want to.
And that's the one with the flex funds, so that one's pretty much covered a hundred percent going forward by flex funds. So, it's a reimbursement program, but we pay for it, then we get money back from the state.
And that includes the construction engineering expenses?
Yeah, it does, yep.
As a first, or May first?
It includes all engineering as of April fourth.
April fourth?
They award it on April fourth, so that's their cutoff point, yeah.
Okay.
So you pay for anything going forward.
Probably pay for some before that.
Yeah, and then, well, we've already accepted the bid, so.
Correct.
Uh, there's not a motion we'd have to do, we just, Todd needs to review and then Jean needs to sign at some point.
Yeah, and it's the contract that was included in the bid package, that's already technically been, or, I mean, sent out, that's what they've been on, so, yeah, they're just, they signed it and sent it back to us, and we gave them the notice of award. And then we'll issue a notice to proceed after everything's executed, and, you know, they'll put us a schedule and.
Right. I'm basically saying there's nothing for us to move on, because we've approved the project.
I just wanted to drop them off to get them signed, and then I was also going to give you guys an update on the Mercer twenty bridge. So we had, Argus, and, are there any more questions on airport road?
As far as these contracts, I just went through them, Charlie gotten these to me before anybody started signing. I just double-checked the things I wanted out are out. The big one, and Charlie's the head of the game in dealing with the contractors, we are not indemnifying any contractor, engineer, et cetera, because Ender doesn't cover us for indemnification. So, the changes that I'd requested both blanket, Charlie took care ahead of time, and I don't see anything in here that would bar the commission from signing off on these.
Okay, thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Okay, county twenty bridge update.
Yep, so, I, I got a phone call from Rinker, Rinker, the box manufacturer, they're going to begin, well, they're behind, they were supposed to start on the twenty-fourth, which is Monday. But their forms that they had scheduled for it, anyway, they got their hands on different ones, but it's going to be like later in the week when they start. Regardless, the contractor, CSI, wants to get started so that when the box is done, they're ready to put it in, and then keep moving forward with their schedule and stuff, all their projects they want. So, I'm very short, they want to start after the fourth of July, my presumption is July eighth is when they want to start. I'll know more after the pre-construction meeting, I'm currently coordinating a pre-construction meeting with the, with the DOT district, Dickinson district, the contractor, myself, and then Alroy. So we're all in the same room, and we have that pre-ju, pre-construction meeting, and that's going to have to take place next week. So, things are moving, finally, it's happening, but here we are, and I guess we're, after the holiday, we should be seeing dirt moving and things happening out there.
Just curious about the projected completion date. Or let, let me rephrase it, about the date that the bridge will be usable.
Oh, you want a like estimation?
Yeah.
So, a lot of times, if, I've heard good things about CSI, you know, from talking with my peers, because I've never worked with them on a box job, they're usually a paving contractor, but I've heard nothing but really good things about them with their box jobs that they've done, like excellent things actually, so it's promising there. And, and as, as far as timeframe goes, it all depends on how many people, they know what their completion date is. The contractor has, I believe our completion date was, forgive me if I'm wrong on this, I'd have to look back. Well, it was in the contract, I forget what the actual completion date was, but it was in the fall sometime.
It's like sixty, sixty days roughly, wasn't it?
Uh, it's not based on after starting date, it's based on it's a completion date. And so if they, if they don't get it done before, say it's October fifteenth, I could be wrong on that. If they don't get it done by then, then liquidated damages coming to play very much so, like we ran into before. So, they should be able to complete this, and within a month's timeframe, three to four weeks typically is a good turnaround time, I would imagine for box.
I'm just asking that, because there are people who, I've already gotten calls, some ag people.
Okay.
And he said he needs, would like to know in case he has to make arrangements to go, because otherwise, he has to go.
And it's not me.
No, it's not you, no. I think they have to go all the way over around Hazen.
Yep.
Or down to almost town over.
So that's why this, especially the one person who contacted me, he, he would, wanted to know.
Yeah.
So that's a call I even made to you previously.
Sure.
About the projected date, so.
Yeah, so once we do like a final field inspection, I would, I would, I would estimate August, early August to mid-August, somewhere in there would be, when that would probably be taking place, and assuming, assuming they repaired the roads back to their original condition, and those are accepted by the county, you know, for haul roads and stuff that they're, because they're going to have to submit a haul road plan, so once we have that done and the box is inspected, we can open it back up to the public at that point.
Yeah, I'd like to get it open as quickly as we can, because there's, there's a number of ag people down there that.
It's a high priority, I think.
Yeah.
Right, and saying.
So that's, that was my update on that, I guess.
Okay, anything else? Any other, commissioner, got any questions?
There is a maintainer sitting down there.
A what?
A maintainer sitting down there now.
Oh, really?
It's not ours either, I don't know whose it is, but they came by on like Monday.
That's Jones, he's getting like road ready, road ready.
That's who I thought, I thought it looked like.
They're getting that road ready for, to Charlie's dash cam, so they can.
Yeah, he moved out there like Monday afternoon or Tuesday or something, I don't know, we.
He's got a couple of these in it, but they're getting that road completely ready, so when they, they go back, look at the road, or you can explain it better than I can, what you need to do.
Well, federal aid jobs, they, they require us to, the contractor submits an approval, an approval or request for a haul road route, and the road department approves it, so we actually drive the route before construction operations begin, and we have a dash cam to, as video evidence of the condition of the road, so when the project's completed, and before acceptance of the project takes place, the haul route roads that were used and impacted by the project are actually have to be accepted as well, so if they're not, they have to recondition it to kind of existing, pre-existing conditions, so. So that's, that's what it sounds like they're doing out there, is shaping it up, so. So that's, that's what it sounds like they're doing out there is shaping it up, so.
Getting ready for that.
Yeah.
He, it's been parked, but he's, somebody's out there.
Yep.
Okay, anything else for Charlie, I guess? Thank you, Charlie.
Yep.
Thank you.
Budget requests.
Okay, yeah, Dawn and I just wanted to ask the commission, come up, Dawn. Um, in case I missed anything, all we wanted to do is, uh, for the July 3rd meeting, any commissioners, you have requests for the budget, and this is only so that each one of you knows what you put into the budget. Have them by the July 3rd meeting, cause what we wanna do is, I wanna get, cause I'll have all the department head budgets. I wanna put it into that blue book budget, so you get kind of a feel for it, and give it to you guys the 17th. Then you can look at it before the 22nd meeting when you meet with each department head. And then that way you'll get to review what they give, cause you're just gonna get exactly what that department head submitted. And then, um, then you'll have the 17th to the 22nd to review it, get your questions ready, and then we'll set up with each department head, you guys can go through, ask your questions there. Then once that meeting's done, then I want, you know, a couple of days to put it all into a preliminary budget. And then after that, you guys decide when we wanna meet, but I'm gonna need some time, and, you know, whatever changes you make that day in those budgets, that's what I'll be needing to change.
You say on the 22nd of July?
See, the 22nd of July is when you guys had decided you wanted to meet with all the separate department heads to go over those budgets that they provide. I have the 23rd at 11:00. Did I put on the wrong date? I don't even have it in.
Uh, I, I apologize for this, but did we get a, uh, calendar with, uh, dates on?
Yeah, I got July 22nd, and it's, um, whole day thing. I mean, if you meet with the, this is separate from your regular meeting, this is a special budget meeting. We're gonna do it the whole day, or at least that's the timing, like from nine to Monday.
One day, but, and maybe I just put on the wrong date, I have it on the 23rd. I remember us talking about it, because the county, the county tours are the 24th and 25th.
Oh, the 23rd, I bet that's where you got that sheet from the, um, NDECO was coming up to see us?
That's the 24th and 25th.
No, they're only coming one day.
24th. June 24th, that's June.
The 25th, aren't they?
No, no.
It's in July.
No.
Oh.
We talked about Monday and Tuesday, yeah.
I think we're, yeah, we were going back and forth.
July 25th.
Were we?
I think I got that on my calendar.
Okay, so, I mean, if you guys wanna, I had it recorded as the 22nd now. If you wanna change it, change it now, cause we got time.
Well, the 23rd I'm gonna be gone, which is...
So am I.
So then maybe it was the 22nd.
I was, I'm like, I haven't, yeah, the 23rd I have.
We talked about it.
Oh. But I do remember us talking Tuesday though, too, so... But I didn't put it in my calendar, to be honest with you. So are we talking the 22nd then? For sure, or not?
Yeah, I need a for sure today, because I got, I'm telling people the 22nd. Because I found out there's a for sure.
22nd, 23rd, I'm available.
Liza and I are both gone the 23rd, so 22nd would be better.
If we could, please. Otherwise, I just won't be here.
Okay, no one's opposed to the 22nd?
Jamie, you were fine with the 22nd?
I'm fine either, had stuff later in the week.
What, what time on the 22nd? So I'm, I'm putting it in my calendar right now.
That's... Working on it too. Ten o'clock?
It's up to you guys. On Monday or Tuesday, later in the week, there's stuff with NADACO.
You wanna start at 10:00 AM, and then the last person, I got 3:00 PM.
Well, we can, I guess we're used to meeting at nine. Nine doesn't bother me any. Okay, July 22nd at 9:00 AM.
And then going all day?
Pretty much. Yep, I'm scheduling people, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I've got that added.
Thank you.
Oh, yes.
Or at least put dates when you give them to us on there?
Dated, everything dated, please.
That is super helpful for us.
Okay, yeah, we can do that.
Just on the top or somewhere in there that we know what day we were, that the budget is as of.
Yes. Otherwise, that's, that was all we were gonna, unless I forgot something, Dawn.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Dawn.
Thanks, Dad.
Thank you, Carmen. HR.
Good morning, Alice. Okay, so I just sent out the packet last Monday, I believe. Did everybody get that in the email?
Yep.
Okay, so we're just standing on our, um... Speaking of the budget, questioning, um, on the health insurance, um, if we can get some guidance from the commissioners of what your thoughts are going forward with, you know, the health insurance. Does that envision if that's gonna continue, or if we're looking at changing that, just so that the managers are aware of how the budget is well.
I do believe before we talked about it, we were gonna have it be a percentage.
Okay.
Just not like the whole percentage back, but I think, isn't that something that we discussed?
We talked about, we talked about until like nine percent.
So right now you're covering it at a hundred percent.
A hundred percent, yes.
And you're, you're saying that we may change that?
Cause previously when we discussed this, we were talking about we would have it a hundred percent this first time, but start slowly bringing it back, because it's not gonna be like this forever. And we wanna make sure that people don't get hit with it the final year, now you have to pay your full percentage.
And maybe it works out to stay at a hundred percent.
And to be honest with you, as HR, it's a great recruitment and retention tool. And it is comparable to what other counties are doing, it's paying a hundred percent in insurance, so, just my thoughts on that too.
There's, there's a few ways to do it. Um, we were using the, um, that health insurance fund to make up that 10% difference, like if we reduce that to say eight percent, but then increased our budget to cover 92%, that would start slowly not relying on that fund. That fund would go longer. And then it would give us multiple years to get to the point if we wanted to stay at a hundred percent, that it would be completely in the budget, and then that fund, um, would be exhausted to the point that we want it to be, and then, just one thought.
It wouldn't be such a big hit.
Right, to the budget or to the employees if we decided to set.
Work whichever way it goes.
Right.
Yep. And Dawn has her hand up, too.
Well, and this is one of those items that our budget needs to be done by October 12th.
10?
No, 10.
10th, the final one, yeah.
No, then we turn it into the state.
Yeah, it has to be finalized, approved by August 10th.
October, the final one is October. The premium is August.
Yeah, October 10th.
Final budget.
So, what I'm getting at is open enrollment in health insurance that we want, depending on what the commission finalizes, I would like to have that done definitely by the time open enrollment is closed.
Well, open enrollment doesn't start till December, yes, but our budget starts January 1st, so we need to know during this budget season how you guys are proceeding with that.
That's fine, but even if the open enrollment starts December 1st, and the budget starts January 1st, that's all good and fine, but we don't wanna go and say have employees sign up for health insurance, and then we, as a commission, decide, okay, no, you're gonna pay half your, fifty percent, and now open enrollment's closed and they can't switch. So I want it done in that timeframe, but it sounds like it will be.
Yes, you guys will decide during this budget procedure, so once that's fin, the budget is finalized, they will know before open enrollment in December.
That, and...
Well, unless we run into...
Unless we run into, yeah, like we did last year, so.
Just happen that way with adjustments.
So...
So just some guidance from you is what the department managers are asking for.
Well, for now, I would tell department heads to plan it according to the way it is right now, until we give them... Be, because that's what, what the whole discussion on July 22nd is going to be, and at that point, if we change the numbers, then they'll have to change your budget accordingly. But we need to start somewhere, so for now, do it the way it currently is being practiced.
Okay.
And then we edit it from there. And I got a feeling that's, the health insurance is probably the big question on all of the budgeting.
Yep.
So, that, that would be my suggestion. You got four other commissioners that can weigh in.
All right, so, um, job description, I did include in the packet that there is a job description for the commissioners now. Um, I encourage you to read over this in the next meeting in the hour, but I think I'll have you sign it, and then I will keep that in your file going forward.
I don't, is, you just base it off of century code, because that exact, I mean...
Yes.
Seems a little redundant, but essentially, our job description is defined by the state.
Correct. But it's just your signature in your file stating that you understand that what your duties are as a commissioner of Mercer County.
Okay.
Okay. All right, and then I did have some policies in that, um, update too. The exempt employee paid deductions policy was a policy that was pretty much approved of at a previous meeting, when we talked about salarying employees. So once, if you feel that is okay to approve 100%, then I would have Jeanne sign it, and then I would go into, um, the HR policy manual. Of the employee in HR line.
But don't the people, I mean, we're gonna have to know what it says.
Oh, yeah, you'll get, you'll know what it says. I'll send it out to all the employees, but it will just go into the HR policy manuals.
I'm following along, if you're going in order, I've got them. Next is the mileage.
Yep, mileage reimbursement policy. Um, this was brought up because there were some questions about how we reimburse for mileage when using a personal vehicle, so I developed this policy as well. I just encourage you to review that, and I think at the next meeting, uh, we will read through it, and if everybody's in agreement, if we could pass that, that'd be another policy for Mercer County that we need to do. Basically, it states what the employee would get paid for, if they did certain things, distances between employers, point of origin, vocational business function, et cetera.
And this is with their own personal vehicle, yes, correct?
With their own personal vehicle, not county vehicle.
Okay.
Okay.
And then the next policy is the one Jeanne asked for me to put in. This for you today, it's called the commission conflict policies, so I think I'll make Jeanne speak on this one.
This one here is, uh, employee, employees of the county running for county commission, there is nothing that forbids a employee for running for county commission, but upon winning the election, they'll have to make a choice if they wanna work for the county or via commissioner, plain and simple. I've read many, and I, I know our state attorney might have a little bit difference of opinion than me, but I've read several of the AG's, um, opinions, and, um, there's a few on a, um, landfill supervisor. And what it comes down to is if you end up with three employees of the county on the commission, now you have the employees running your county, and for instance, when they're, when a holiday, a dec, a decision is to be made on benefits, wages, salaries, and it affects that person, they have to recuse themselves from the vote. Well, if you end up with three employees on the commission, you don't have a budget, because the budget includes their wages, salaries, and benefits. Then with three people stepping off, you no longer have a quorum, so you'd never have a budget that'd be passed. And then you start running into situations where, um, I don't know, since our auditor's sitting right here, I'll pick on Carmen. So you have the, uh, Carmen's assistant runs for county commission, wins the, uh, election, now you have Carmen's assistant sitting here at the meeting, making decisions for the county, where the county commissioners are effectively her boss, but she is, cause I'm the audit, um, auditor's assistant, deputy auditor. She's my boss, so who's the boss in that, in that situation? Plus, there'd be a, a conflict where any decisions that have to be made, I got my boss sitting right here, and I wanna make a decision that's gonna affect her. It's just such a conflict that it don't work. And in the AG's, um, response on a lot of these, I mean, there was one on school teacher, a school teacher can't be on the school board, because, again, it's got to do with wages and benefits. Uh, the only one I couldn't find is an exact example of the AG's opinion on a county employee being on the county commission. But there's so many scenarios that parallel like that, I can't believe that the AG would, um, look at it differently, or have an opinion, so what I suggest is that we had, and I've been asked, well, what about Jamie? Well, Jamie was told that it's not a conflict, so she would finish out her term. This wouldn't, she wouldn't be kicked off tomorrow if we adopt this, cause she was told it wouldn't affect her term, but...
I ran before I was an employee.
And the, uh...
And we did check with the AG's office, and I do have a boss.
And here's the distinction. Jamie, you're not Jamie's boss as jail nurse. Terry is. And that's the distinction.
But I get where you're, like, I get where this is coming from, like, I take no offense to this, because I get where this is coming from. Obviously, I ran for this position before I was an employee, but I get where this is coming from, and I I don't disagree, but we did, for me personally, checked with the AG and NADACO and eighty-five other agencies. But it...
The distinction is, okay, uh, there is one out of Mercer County where the landfill supervisor wanted to run for county commission. Jim Johnson, years ago, made that request, and if you read through that opinion, because the commission would be that landfill supervisor's employee under the law, that wouldn't qualify. When it comes to an employee of another elected official, that's the distinction. So who's the boss? Basically, the commission is the overall boss. The checks and balances are the other elected officials. Because the elected officials, all five of you, me, Carmen, our boss is the voters. So with Jamie taking that position after she ran, uh, but before the election, this was researched, the distinction is that her boss on her day job is not the commission. It's a separate elected official. And like, like the five of you, me, Carmen, and Terry, the voters are our boss. So that is legally permissible. But someone from the Highway Department, um, Alice, uh, any other folks working in the offices here under appointed officials, they cannot be a commissioner and have that. They have to choose between one or the other. So you got that separation in the checks and balances by them working directly under the supervision of an elected official.
Okay, so...
And I've had people say, well, that's a difference without a distinction. It's a major distinction. 'Cause Terry can put whatever he wants in for the budget, and then he decides with the pool of funds he has, how much each individual employee is going to be paid.
So Terry should encourage three of his deputies, oh, no, three of the, not deputies, three of the personnel that work under him to run for commission, and then they get on the commission, and
Okay.
you think they're gonna contradict anything their boss tells them?
Okay.
That, that is a conflict beyond belief. That can't be.
If we get to a situation where we have more than one or two, so that we could not have a quorum, if they would have to step down for the sheriff's budget, then it comes in.
I'll, I'll disagree. You can't, so now you're gonna dis- discriminate, you're gonna say, we got... Oh, goddammit, Jamie works in the sheriff's department. I was gonna say, we got...
Jean, would you like me to step down?
No. No, because you were told that you could. Now, so we got one from the sheriff's department, we get one from the road department, and we get another...
One from the road department?
Gwen. Okay, well, another one from the sheriff's department. And one from the...
Well, now we would have a problem with the quorum on that, and that's where the conflict kicks in.
They can't, they can't vote on a budget, because it directly affects their benefits.
You've answered your own question. If we have two from the same department, we still have a quorum to vote on the sheriff's budget. If we're not gonna have a quorum to bear, to vote on the sheriff's budget, then it's a conflict that by law prevents...
I don't know any other entity where any employee can be on the board or the commission, so if, if this doesn't pass, and I don't care if it passes, I would say then I want it, uh, anyone to challenge it, to take it to the AG, and then of course, we'll abide, we'll follow the AG's opinion on it, no matter which way it is. But, no, I, I can't see where people are in control of their own destiny. I don't care if it's one or if it's five. I, it's just...
I don't disagree with you. Like, I get what you're saying, Jean, I've...
Okay, the first part of the analysis is, is it a conflict? And then the elected official being over eliminates the conflict. However, if we have one elected official stacking the commission to the point where they can't have a quorum, that's a different conflict. That's an additional conflict that has to be overcome. I'm not, I'm not saying the Jean's proposal is good, bad, or indifferent. I'm just giving you the legal, and yes, it is a nightmare. Um, one of the problems we have in small communities is there's only so many people to go around to get things done.
And there are provisions in the sentry code for that. It's, it talks about a population amount, and we are over that. In our, in Mercer County. I, it did mention, uh, I'm not gonna say a number, because then I'd be, it'd be guessing, but there is a number in the sentry code where it states that you can hold two, effectively two positions.
Well, a- and what I'm saying is, is that if we would have three other employees of elected officials in the county want to run, they're gonna have to make a choice because, uh, so let's say this one coming up right now, we have two sheriff's department employees running for county commission. Jamie's here, it's not a conflict. Those two will add a conflict, so therefore, they would have to choose. First in, uh, last out.
Well, and the way I've even read the AG's opinions is Jamie can vote on the budget. Because in the budget is her wages and salary, her, is her benefits, is her benefits and her wages. So she effectively is voting on her wage.
But Jean, we vote on our wage and our benefits here for commission.
Yes, we do, and that's allowed in the sentry code. That's specifically mentioned in the sentry code. But it does mention other... It, it mentions the, i- in the opinions, not in the sentry code. In the sentry code, it mentions the commissioners. But it doesn't, sentry code doesn't mention employees of the county being on the commission. It's just there are AG opinions on conflicts of interest where employees are members of the board or com- or, um, commission. And there's, there's, uh, like I said, there's the AG's opinion on the, on the schoolteacher, there's the AG's opinion on the, uh, on, um, landfill supervisor being a commissioner. There's, uh, actually the, uh, landfill supervisor, there's about four different, he, he, the, the AG answered it like four times. So it's like four opinions, but it's basically one opinion.
Well, there's more than just the AG opinions. There's the ca- supreme court cases that have been decided on this.
So it's just...
And it's not something where it's a black and white. This person can run, that person can't.
And it, it, I mean, that's where, I, I just I, I can't see, uh, voting on your own benefits and salary package. That just fathoms me that we would allow that.
Well, I can, I can step down from that decision, Jean, if that's what you wish.
I'm not picking on Jamie folk.
I'm just saying, I'm...
Well, we can solve the problem. Come on, you're not an employee of the sheriff, you're a contractor.
But?
We can solve the problem completely. Switch you from an employee to a contractor to the sheriff's department.
I'm happy to do whatever the chairman wishes.
I have no problem with the current person who's sitting up on the chaired, or on the commission. My point is, at what point is it too many? And we, you can't sit here and pick and choose and say, well, you can have two, but you can't have three. You can have four, but you can't have five. No, you, it's either all or none. Because now I'm, I'm working for, I don't know, the register, and I wanna run for commission. You can say, well, no, you can't, because we already got two employees. Well, no. I wanna, I wanna be on the commission also. You, you, you're either gonna allow it or you're not gonna allow it. I've never seen anywhere where you can select an amount. And it's... I, I'm just looking out for the voters of the, for the residents of the county. I mean, if you're gonna end up with three county officials on here, what the hell? Let's re- let's give ourselves a fifty percent pay raise, and who's gonna stop it? Legally, they can. Or, we're gonna give, there's two of us or three of us on the sheriff's, uh, department on here, we're gonna give ourselves a fifty percent pay raise just for the sheriff's department, and the rest of you, we're gonna freeze your wage. You can't stop it. The only thing you can do is do a recall petition on those three commissioners.
No, that's why legally you can't have three sheriff's department, sheriff's employees on the board.
Anyway, if, if, if we don't incorporate this policy, I do want an AG's opinion on a commissioner, any county employee being on the commission. I'd beat it to death. I'm done with it. Me, that, you know my point, and you know my stance on it. Next.
Okay, so I did lay up there the department request for wage increases. It is a spreadsheet here. This is right on top. Department request, six eighteen towards four.
Mine says credit card.
You got the wrong paper.
Okay.
So that is what the departments are requesting. Just so it gives you an idea of what they're asking for this year.
Can I see that? 'Cause I couldn't quite read it when I printed it out.
I know, it's really slow.
I don't know if you still can.
Or, or we need to buy you eleven by seventeen paper.
So, and then, um, the other two are, this one is to be competitive with other counties, that'll be who is written on top. And then the wage requested scale. There's several we're using. Just, but the one I wanted to get to you was what the departments were requesting. So far.
Okay.
So what is your guys' thoughts on the cost of living increase? Are you guys thinking the national average is four point eight, which doesn't even touch when inflation is anymore? Um, rotisserie chicken lately is thirteen ninety-nine. I mean, it's pretty tough out there, and I know, seems like a lot, but when you really look at the cost of living nowadays, four point eight is not much at all. So I'm just wanting to get a feel of what you guys are thinking for the cost of living increase wage. And/or do you just wanna do cost of living, or do you wanna get people bumped up to where they should be?
Careful with that word "should be." Should be is a matter of opinion.
Yeah, I should've been born good and, you know, rich and good-looking, and I struck out on both.
I would say have your departments go with the cost of living for now.
Okay.
Off to my right here.
I'd say that'd be a starting point, is go with the cost of living. It's gonna take me a little while to get my magnifying glass out, so I can take a little peek at these, so...
So does the two dollars an hour, does that come closer? Okay.
Okay.
That's in addition to, or that's? Well, you just have, like, in it looks like it's the road department. It says two dollars per hour wage increase, and then so, two dollars an hour plus a four point eight?
No, that would be, the first one is two dollars an hour, just straight two dollars an hour. And then the second, um, line item is four point eight percent lower wage increase. That was just the four point eight. So they, they chose two. They have like just a plain two dollars an hour across the board, or the four point eight. But the two dollars is over the four point eight.
Can you, uh, make this bigger next time?
Yes, I can make this bigger.
She's just comparing the one or the other, so like, they were requesting two, and then they pulled one to four point eight, so it's like if you look at the top one, thirty-eight fifty-two versus thirty-eight twenty-seven, so it's about a quarter of an hour difference.
Yes.
And, and personally, I like the, uh, dollar per hour increases versus the percentage, just so we don't increase the, uh, the difference between a higher-paid employee versus a lower-paid employee. Because if you do a percentage, then the lower ones are increasing, it'll, it keeps staying low, and the higher ones keep getting high, so like, if, if four point eight percent is the target, and the median comes in at, I don't know, one seventy-five, then maybe we do one seventy-five across the board for the budget, and see where that does things. I think from a budgeting standpoint, and from a wage discrepancy, not wage discrepancy, but wage threshold or difference, um, it keeps those in parity. Just my opinion.
I'm not opposed to that either. Yet we just need a starting point somewhere.
Right.
Yeah, the four point eight's fine.
So then figure out what that meeting will be, and I can let the department know as well.
So you'll be emailing that out to everybody?
Okay, so just to reiterate that, Alice is gonna figure out that and get it out to all department heads, so that department heads can then work their budget. Hopefully, get that out pretty quick. Okay.
Do you want me to finish up afterwards, since we're running over? And then we can keep on scheduling. I can come back if you have a meeting too.
Uh, you can, you can keep on.
Okay. Um, just an update, I did talk to Northwood of PERS. I am suggesting that we switch to their life insurance plan. Um, it would be cheaper for the county, and it would also cover every single employee in Mercer County. A twelve thousand dollar life insurance plan, twenty-seven cents per month per employee. So it'll be like twenty-two dollars a month for Mercer County, which is cheaper than what we're paying for guardian life right now. Plus, our employees would also have the opportunity to purchase more life insurance, um, up to three hundred thousand dollars for the employee, up to a hundred thousand dollars for their spouse, which the employee would pay for, and it is portable. So I am suggesting that Mercer County does, uh, move forward and go to Northwood of PERS life insurance.
Is there a particular time that we would have to do that, or can we, uh, switch?
We don't have to do it. We don't, we didn't sign up until October, and then we would do open enrollment, and it wouldn't be effective until January one. So we're good to go.
And then get rid of the guardian life, or they would still have that as an option?
If people wanna continue it, they would be able to continue it on their own, and then we would just get rid of guardian life altogether from the county side.
Yeah, it doesn't get rid of it. People that are in it, I don't think we can kick them out. We just don't offer it.
They can portable, it's portable. They can do it on their own.
But they would have a choice.
Right, they would have a choice. They would do it on their own. We would no longer take it out of their checking report.
On the guardian life.
Right.
Right.
Yep.
Does the county contribute anything to that at all, employee?
Um, just the employ- just the, uh, twenty thousand, the family, they contribute like two dollars or something a month, so...
But the county doesn't contribute towards it?
For the guardian life?
For the guardian life.
Two dollars and eighteen cents a month, I think.
Okay.
Per, per employee?
Per employee.
Yeah, we just, we just need to know if...
It takes it.
Yeah.
There aren't a lot of people.
There aren't a lot of people that take it.
Yeah.
What I, what I'm getting at is that if we make a change, it's still gonna affect the budget, so like, if we're contributing a portion, do we decide to contribute a portion to the other one if we switch, or is it all employee? That's what I'm getting at. Like, how does it affect the...
Well, the twelve thousand dollars insurance is for all employees, and it is, has to be paid by the county. So you got twenty-seven cents per month per employee for a twelve thousand dollar life insurance policy. So it's like, I figured out like twenty-two dollars a month the county would have to pay.
And the most, currently, we pay how much?
Uh, two dollars and eighteen cents for single, and I don't even know how many people are in it, but...
Per month?
Per month.
So you're gonna be saving about ninety percent by switching to PERS.
Yeah. No, I'm not opposed to switching. I'm just wondering how
Right.
how it affects the employee, how it affects the budget, and...
And then when we decide, and I would present all the information to you, I just want to give you notes, a heads up that we're looking at doing that.
Does the guardian life, is that just plain life insurance?
Yeah.
There's no, okay.
Yeah, it's just like life insurance. For this one with, um, it's Voya, you can increase your life insurance, and then when you retire, you, you can take it with you.
Hey Glenn, they're talking about that guardian life. So can you come in? Just so we know, I'm saying I think we should have her. It's like, boy, come in here, and then she can verify, so that, I just don't wanna give the wrong information.
Well, that's gonna gather everything, it's a little, it's a little, I would just give a heads up to take that.
Yeah, it's all in.
Yeah, it's not gonna be any action taken on it today.
Jean, do you think maybe we should pause Alice, though, and go to, because it's eleven, past eleven, and we got quite a few community members for the Scotty Lee event, I think.
She's asking, you wanna pause Alice and go back to? He didn't hear you.
Oh, I was thinking, maybe we should pause...
Life insurance in my head right now.
Yeah, I was thinking, maybe we should pause Alice right now, because we're past eleven, and we got quite a few community members here for Scotty Lee.
Okay, sure.
Didn't mean to interrupt you, Alice. I just thought we got quite a few community members, and I don't want them...
We'll ask you to come back later.
Yeah. Thanks, Alice.
Uh, Scotty Lee Estates Road Improvement, Bill Galvin, Rick Thompson, and Rick Bowman.
Hello.
Morning.
Good morning.
Yeah. Officially today.
We're here, um, interested in improvements in Scotty Lee, Scotty Lee Estates Road. Uh, this is Rick Thompson. He's the president, LSE eight. I'm a homeowner, I live in that area, and we've, I've been there for forty, forty-six years. Seen different changes in the road. It's kinda deteriorated, and I think everybody knows what the status of the road now. And, and I think that Rick has... And, and I think that Rick has done a great job researching options for repairing the road and looking at the road. So we'd like to get an update of where we're at and take that update and go back to the residents for, uh, Scotty Lee Estates. And, and see where they're coming from and be able to have an option that we can realistically go ahead and, uh, not talk about this anymore. And go ahead and start executing some. So Rick had a meeting with, uh, LSEA just recently. Got some feedback that he has comments on regarding some of the comments raised in the last coming meeting. To do with, you know, special assessments, um, utilities, fair enough utilities. We're not looking for that, we're looking for basically maintenance upgrade of the road. That's what we're asking for, something that is possible and viable. The one thing we would like to do is stay with gravel. We've done a lot of good surveys and we even wanna stay with the gravel and we know dust is a problem. I think we feel that would be something that, uh, Scotty Lee Estates themselves would have to address. Just like we got water systems now in Aurora and those are separate entities. We would do the same for like magnesium chloride or whatever it would take to keep the dust level up there. But we need a good road to start, so. Rick, could you update us on?
Well, I can add to is that, um, started to, I visited with Charlie and if we go outside the, the realms of the road that's there, we're gonna be looking at, like you said, the utilities that be moved, there'll be, um, you know, we have to address the water. The corridor have to be involved, it gets to be very, very expensive, you're gonna put pavement in. And, I mean, anywhere from a million to a couple million dollars, that was his estimate. Putting, uh, uh, just fixing the road, putting a cul-de-sac in, putting, there's two pipes in there that are squashed and, uh, that are flattened. They'd have to be replaced, there'd be a larger one put on the far east end with the cul-de-sac. Now would, you know, we can probably get that in at about seventy-five thousand dollars.
The, but the, the culverts we could replace right now?
Yes, we would, we would, uh, the ones that would be replaced would be cut off and it would be banded and fixed the por- portion that's, that's mashed up in the center, it'd have bent down, so. Those, those portions could be fixed. The biggest thing would be put a, uh, cul-de-sac on the east end so the garbage truck can turn around, trucks coming in there that can turn around. Maintenance equipment for the county that comes in there could have a place to turn around. There's just nowhere right now for anybody to do that. I did some numbers on the recycle, I guess if we're going with gravel, it would be, um, be a lot less. I, I would say the project would be under a hundred thousand dollars with just graveling it and, and fixing the road. Just an estimate, so, I mean, I'm not saying that's exactly where it is, but. He would did, did roughly, um, if that were, uh, you're looking at fifty, hundred and sixty-two dollars a lot. And then we, you know, if we can do it better than that, that's what we would try to. I'm not sure with the gravel, you know, depending on where we get the gravel and the cost of that's gonna be down, that can be, it's gonna be changed, you know, is that, you know, trucking is always the biggest issue and how much it's gonna cost.
Price of the gravel has just skyrocketed, so. Well, first you gotta find, I mean, we, we gotta have gravel and then, yeah, anyway, continue, sorry.
Well, I mean, it's like we can get gravel, um, up in that area, it's probably closer and, um, you can go as far as Turtle Lake or something. Randy's got gravel over there. And we do have gravel on the west end of the county too that we've purchased, so. We would have gravel to put down that road. I mean, again, I, I like, um, like I visited with you on two, it's just for clarification on, on, I view the HOA, different than fixing a farm-to-market road, so I mean, I, I would, in my opinion, we would assess that per lot then.
It's a big, big difference if we go in there and redo the entire road and it's, it gets very expensive.
So in terms of you would manage that and manage the whole project?
Yeah, the county can put, I, I was gonna ask Travis, how do we, we would do that and then we assess that, how does that work? Do we pay them?
Yeah, I guess if you did, i- if the thought process is to have the subdivision pay for it, then we create a assessment district. Then the costs associated with that project would be to that district. And then once those are figured out, then, um, since it's a road, that subdivision would have the ability to protest it. If there's enough in favor to proceed, um, then we can go through the process of the assessment and then people would have the ability to pay it after we certify the assessment or it could go against our taxes. And now, the dollar amount you're talking about, on the county level, we could pay from county funds and to get reimbursed or you could always do, um, bonds through Lake Bank in North Dakota. Depending on which route they're going with, um, it, you know, if we're only talking a hundred thousand dollars, I don't think it'd be worth going through all the paperwork and all the stuff to do.
To do the bonds.
To do the bonds, um, but if you're talking like a million, then I would say yes. And then we, as the county, could determine an interest rate, um, one way or the other. If, if you do the bonding, um, you usually have the ability to, um, increase that by one and a half percent and that kind of covers administrative costs and, you know, if people don't pay on time and things like that. So there's plenty of options, it's just, we have to settle on, on a proposed road improvement and then make sure that it doesn't get protested out. And once we've satisfied those, then you could proceed.
So basically they have to decide what they wanna do and then we, we as a county would pay the upfront to the contractor or the contractor?
Yeah, if, if we don't go through any bonding, then yeah, we would pay it upfront and then, um, then we'd get reimbursed on the assessment and we could do a ten-year assessment, we could do a twenty-year assessment. Roads are typically capped out at twenty years, um, so we typically wouldn't go exceed that. So, um, I guess the biggest thing is determine what improvements they want and make sure that they're not gonna protest it out. And then, and then you could proceed on the work at any time.
So that's where we're at and we're gonna.
So, um, we had an association meeting on June eighth and, um, we talked about paving and, and going through the process of getting all that done. There's a lot of unknowns with that and we understand that, but rough estimates is seventeen thousand dollars per lot. And that's without any heckups along the road that, that we don't know about when they get into testing and everything. So the association voted to table paving and any kind of a special assessment district with that and pursue this option instead. I'm not gonna say that somewhere down the road, they wouldn't still elect to try to do something like that, but for sure in the near future, we would prefer road improvement and the cul-de-sac at the end would be a huge improvement for, people come in with campers and trailers and whatever and are backing into driveways and it's, you know, sometimes mailboxes get knocked over and those kind of things, so. And for maintenance, for, for the county, having a cul-de-sac at the end, I'm sure would be really beneficial. So, anyway, the point is, is that the paving, I think, is totally on the back burner for now and we would like to pursue, um, this other option. And I guess at the same time, wondering if the county would help share as part of that cost. You know, it's, it's, uh, aside from some gravel that we actually paid for last summer, there hadn't been any improvements on that road in years and we're wondering if you wouldn't help partner on part of that, that cost, say a hundred thousand, whatever the number is, so.
And on a, on a project cost-wise, if it's under two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we don't have to publicly bid it, but if it goes over that, then we have to publicly bid it. So there, there's a lot of nuances, but it kinda sounds like, um, what I'm gathering is you're looking at a couple culvert replacements, a cul-de-sac and, and new gravel. And if, if you're looking at that hundred thousand dollar range, it could be something that the county could perform, but.
We just. We just didn't wanna go ahead with improvements on the road and, and then you decide, no, we want a total reconstruction, so. We're kind of almost starting over, so what you would, would, it sounds like you're willing to pursue is that we just do some improvements on it. Then like replace, take care of the culvert and do some graveling and get a cul-de-sac in there for turnaround. Do we, was, was that, are we gonna be able to secure property to turn around?
Yes, that's a section right there. It was measured out, measured in to put a cul-de-sac down on the east end.
Okay, alright.
I think he, I don't remember the exact number, but he measured it out for that, uh. I was gonna say seventy-five feet turnaround, I think it was eighty foot or something like that.
Yeah, didn't you have something from Jones Construction last week on that or last meeting on that?
Last meeting, we had a, uh, the proposal on it from them, but we didn't do anything until we decided what they, we were looking to see what the HOA wants to do.
Right, we didn't wanna have to redo something.
We'll get some numbers for you, how's that on, I don't even know how to word it, minimal improvements. Improvements we can do without involving the core, ba- basically I think the core would be one of the big hurdles. And then water, watershed.
We would stay within the limits, limits if the road is there according to, um, Jones. We wouldn't go outside, we wouldn't have to move the utilities. They would do some supers and move the water to certain areas so it would drain better. There was one spot that there was up on the, the far east hill, they would have to slide the road a little bit to the south, but other than that, it was pretty minimal change.
Okay.
We just be adding material to those.
We'd be adding some material and then gravel, it's, he could shape the road to where he can get to shape it.
We could do a little bit of shaping on it.
Yeah, I think based on the recent weather, uh, raining every other day, um, the road is held up amazingly well. Now in the spring, it's real greasy in the spring, but now it seems to be doing well.
Yeah, I drove on it earlier this week and there was just one spot where I saw a little bit of a runoff coming down into somebody's, but otherwise it, it was holding up quite well, I was surprised, it was right after, it was the day it was raining even, that I was up there just to check it out to see, so.
I think the major issue is that the road is sunk and now it's colder, right? That's where the water runs down the road.
Yeah, I did notice that.
Okay, well, it's okay then with you, we'll, um, Rick will look into that and get some numbers put together and present them to you guys and we'll move, we'll make decisions from there.
I would like to see, you know, like if you have like two or three people in a committee that can decide, you, you don't have to go back to the HOA.
Well, I would say wait till we get you the numbers.
Right.
We're not gonna ask you for a go now because then you might say, wait a minute, you said it was gonna be fifty dollars and now it's a hundred and fifty dollars, so. Let, let's get the numbers and present them to you and then we'll, we'll move from there, how's that? Okay?
And knowing if, if we're gonna be assessed or if the county is going to cover a part or, or all of it?
That I can't tell you right now. Let's just go with the premise that it'll be assessed and then we'll, we'll take it from there. That way you get a feel for it.
So we won't be using the special assessment procedure that we all slaved over? This'll be the second, uh, promise of the second option that you discussed somehow, um, just on that directly with the county and then assess?
Yeah, so an assessment can be done with internal funds or external funds, um, it, it really doesn't matter. There's, um, what I was saying is like, if we're looking at, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, that's probably something we can work within our budget and do it from internal, but when we were talking asphalt, we were talking a million and, you know, that's.
That would require a special assessment district and all of that.
Right, and it triggers.
This is basically, uh, maintenance, yeah.
Right. So, um.
Would we need to go through the special assessment, uh, organization and everything if it's this small amount of money or?
Not if it's just being maintenance that's in need.
No, no, but I think, I think it's, we, we, we could, we could still assess the property.
Right.
But we don't have to go through that whole procedure, okay?
I have one question here that Steve's flashbang too. So if we go ahead and we do all this, do we have any kind of commitment from the county that's helping keep the roads longer than it's gravel surface? This county road, would it be bladed, snow removal like the rest of Mercer County?
I think we should do that.
You're making me scratch my head. I'd wanna say we'll, we would do what we can at the time. Every time it snows, we're not gonna run out there and that's not gonna be the first road opened. Um, we do our emergency routes first, um, uh, school bus routes and, um, we, we would, we would do, you know, you're, you're gonna look at it, you're gonna say, well, you're gonna do the minimum amount probably, but we would, we would do some maintenance out there, is all I can say at this point.
Look, the north-south road of the state, that, that's all that is within, that's always being cleared. Of course, we're a long way from the county shop and, so we gotta wait for the maintainer to get out there. But they do clear that road and it just seems like you're already there, you know, now.
Hopefully we can change that a little bit, the big issue all the time was turnaround.
I was just gonna say the cul-de-sac would help.
I think the cul-de-sac would greatly improve that ability.
Yeah.
And, and we do have a school bus that runs into our development and.
Don't have to throw, don't have to throw that at me, but yes. I know what you're saying, but, uh, the problem has been a turnaround. And if we can secure that, then, yeah, I, I can, I can't officially say, I just say as a person that, you know, it would make sense when they're opening the pavement, why not just go in there, clean it, swing in the turnaround and come back out?
Rick has a process he's gonna use to get approval from everybody.
Okay.
So as soon as we get those numbers, then he'll go back, uh, you know.
Okay.
Be able to get back to, um.
It's almost, I know, probably, at least we moved somewhere here now, even though it sounds like we're going back to the beginning, but we're gonna be able to move, okay?
And for us to spray the road, do we need permission to do that for, for dust control or monitor, can we take care of that?
You have to spray the road, spray the road.
I don't see a problem with that.
Yeah, no, do it, do what you want, as long as it's, you're not doing something illegal or. Then the guy way back in the corner might talk to you. Okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, appeal of Ken Miller's termination, Scotty Lee, County Highway Superintendent. Alright, Ian's, this is an appeal. I'm gonna let, uh, Ken approach and give you, oh, I don't know, approximately five minutes to voice your appeal. And then I'll turn it over to my Estates Attorney.
Good morning, uh.
Morning.
Five minutes, I was slotted for twenty-five minutes and I, there's no way I can get. to the fourteen deals that I was reprimanded for on February twentieth by both you and I've got twenty to twenty-five minutes with the material here, with facts and everything else to contradict what's in that letter.
Um, not twenty-five minutes, we'll give you about five minutes.
How could I appeal when I have, I should be able to do all my fourteen terms that were given to me by Rick and Gene on February twentieth?
Go ahead.
In the June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four issue of the Hazen Star, Commissioner Bowman stated he is recommending that Miller be terminated. It will take action from the full county commission to either approve or reject the recommendation, end quote. This statement proves that Commissioner Bowman is well aware of the county's policy on termination, yet he and HR Director Alice Grensteiner blatantly disregarded this policy on the morning of June tenth, twenty twenty-four, when the two of them entered my office with the letter and terminated my employment effective immediately and required me to turn in all county equipment and be escorted off the premises by a sheriff's deputy. I have also received documents from HR affirming my effective termination date of June tenth and explaining my culver rights. I requested meeting minutes from the county auditor regarding board action of my termination and was told there was no meeting or minutes where this occurred. So was a meeting in violation of open records where this discussion occurred or was it this decision made solely by Commissioner Bowman? Either of these scenarios are clearly violations of open meeting laws and board policy. This also brings up grave concerns regarding the honesty, integrity and trustworthiness of Commissioner Bowman when he lies to the paper and county constituents to try to cover up his actions, which he knew had directly violated policy. I will now respond to each of the fourteen Commissioner Bowman referencing my termination letter on June tenth, and this reprimand was given to me by Commissioners Bowman and Wolf on February twentieth, twenty twenty-four, but was never presented to the board for formal approval. I was never given a timeline for completion and was in constant contact with Commissioner Bowman regarding what we are doing daily in projects. Commissioners Wolf and Bowman also did not complete any annual reviews or follow the recommended review policy or procedure as stated in Board Policy two zero nine, Performance Evaluation. The Board of Commissioners shall conduct work performance evaluations annually of the appointed department heads. These performance evaluations should be conducted on a calendar year basis and shall be made in writing on a standard form that is provided by the auditor's office. And again, it states the Board Commissioners, not two Commissioners, will conduct evaluations. Based on the reprimand, there were a number of issues from twenty twenty-three, so why didn't Commissioner Wolf do an evaluation and bring it to the commission when he had my portfolio in twenty twenty-three? These two Commissioners continue to collude with each other to run county business on their own without action of the full board. Item one, Jersey barriers, County Road twenty, County twenty bridge. On January fifteenth, twenty twenty, the Commission signed an agreement with the State DOT to provide positive closure on any bridges that are condemned in the county. On October first, twenty twenty-one, the State DOT deemed a bridge on County twenty as condemned, so the county was required to provide positive closure. The county put up road closed signs along with type three barricades on November first, twenty twenty-one, and sent pictures to the DOT to confirm closure. The residents in the area continuously moved the barricades to cross the bridge. Since this was not creating positive closure, we put up the concrete Jersey barriers to comply with the agreement with the state. On April eleventh, twenty twenty-three, Commissioner Bowman came into my office and told Alrey and myself, remove the Jersey barriers because they were illegal per state's attorney and sheriff turnus. I told Rick, we were dealing with many issues due to flooding, but I would remove them as soon as we took care of the flood issues, to which he replied, no problem. Meeting minutes from April fifteenth, twenty-three verified the flooding was severe as an emergency flood declaration was approved, that meeting and an update on damages was provided to the commission on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. On April eighteenth, twenty-three, Commissioners Wolf and Bowman came to my office and said, if the Jersey barriers weren't removed immediately, I would be fired because they had their two votes, they just needed their third, meaning the two of them would vote to terminate me and just as they, me and they needed one more Commissioner to vote to terminate me, of which I do have those on recording from the two comedians that when they came to my office, for the record. On April nineteenth, twenty-three, we removed the Jersey barriers. After removing the Jersey barriers and putting up type three barricades backup, the residents continued to move the barricades and cross the bridge. I gave pictures and video to Sheriff Turnus of the residents who moved the barricades causing over twenty-five hundred dollars worth of damage and other residents were crossing bridges. This is a punishable offense. Terry told me to turn it over to insurance. I contacted insurance and it, who said it was not covered so the county would have to absorb the damages. The county received a letter on July sixth, twenty twenty-three from Chad Horn at the DOT, letter included in the packet. He discussed the conversation he had with Rick Bowman and Terry Turnus about replacing the type three barricades, barriers with the concrete Jersey barriers to create a positive closure, yet I was told that these concrete barriers were illegal and a road hazard. Mr. Horn stated that from my, from my call, it is my understanding that no change is going to be made to achieve positive closure. On July eighteenth, twenty-three, Commissioner Wolf emailed Chad Horn from the State DOT prohibiting him from having any contact with the Highway Department. On July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, the Commission meeting minutes state, due to the county receiving a letter from the DOT stating that if the bridge is not positively closed by Friday, July twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, the one point one million dollars in federal bridge funds will be revoked. Commissioner Frye made a motion to officially close the bridge per the DOT recommendation, all voted aye except for Commissioner Volk. It is important to note that Commissioner Volk resides near this bridge. Frye made a motion to put the concrete Jersey barriers back into place at the County Road twenty bridge. Taylor seconded, all voted aye except for Bowman. Bowman was, also announced his resignation, resignation as a road department portfolio holder at this July nineteenth meeting due to the fact that within the Office of the Attorney General's Opinion, Open Meeting Guide, it states that two portfolio holders of one department establishes a quorum and violates open meeting laws. Bowman made a motion to step down as a road portfolio holder, Volk seconded, all voted aye. Motion carried. On and around August ninth, twenty twenty-three, Commissioners Bowman and Wolf came to my office and said that if Alrey, anyone from the department or myself went near that bridge, we would be terminated. I was again told we have two, we just need a third meeting, the two of them would vote to terminate me, so we just needed one more for termination. My termination is purely retaliatory based on this bridge issue as the reprimand states, I was the one that involved the state of North Dakota in the bridge issue and I had put the county at odds with the state government. In reality, I was, it was Commissioner Bowman and Wolf that put the county at risk by forcing me to remove the barriers or I will be terminated. The Jersey barriers are still up and yet here I am terminated for doing a job and following recommendations of the state while trying to protect the county from liability. Item two, County Road twenty-one accident damages. This reprimand states an issue of credibility and trust due to damage estimated from the county engineer after he inspected the road. You state I lied about the county engineer inspecting the scene and the contractors believed the damage was less than the county engineer's estimate. I have included an email from the county engineer noting from Kevin Kelvoda from the county engineer's office, did in fact inspect the scene and provided a cost estimate per March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes. Charlie Hankins of Interstate Engineering and Ken Miller, Mercer County Road Superintendent, gave updates on the following road issues. County Road twenty-one patching recommendation is to overlay where there was no, has been reported damage. No discussion or motion was made noted by the board. I'm curious how I can be reprimanded for presenting a cost estimate that was given by the county engineer, interstate engineer. I didn't, did not personally come up with this estimate, but yet it brings issues of my credibility and trust. This accident occurred in February of twenty-three, why is this being addressed in my reprimand one year after it occurred? I believe this reprimand is unwarranted and should be removed from my file. Weight restrictions. This reprimand states, I am telling residents that road restrictions have been removed from county roadways and I am providing inaccurate information which contradicts guidance provided to me by Commissioners and creates havoc among residents. At the August second, twenty-three commission meeting, Commissioner Wolf made a motion to implement DOT weight limits on all county signs. When asked by our residents about my response, has always been the county restrictions have been removed and we are now following the state limits of eight ton, one oh, eight ton per ax of one oh five five max. Unless you can provide me with names and statements from residents that can verify this reprimand, it is nothing but hearsay and should be removed from my file. Item four, request for road maintenance. Commissioners Wolf and Bowman stated I failed to address most requests for road maintenance resulting from constituent complaints and road hazards. Blades are out daily maintaining the county road, roads, but it is impossible for us to move this equipment to another area every time we get a complaint as we would never get anything accomplished. The Highway Department keeps logs that can verify this. We try our best to get areas of concern as quickly as possible while still being efficient. Only request we did not respond to her from residents or private property or minimum maintenance roads that these are county, are not county responsibility per road policy. Again, unless you can provide me with names and statements from residents that can't verify this reprimand, it's nothing but hearsay. And also along with that, the fact that Rachel does keep logs of every phone call that comes into the office and she has those logs too. Number, item five, utilization of the water truck. This reprimand states that the Highway Department is not utilizing the water truck to blade and maintain roads as requested by Commissioners Wolf and Bowman and instead of considering the request, I informed that then with the water truck has to be housed in a specific location for quick access in the event of a fire. This past month while working on County twenty, we did, between Buell and Zap, we did utilize the water truck as we were using gravel from the Byron pit. The gravel we are getting from the Fleeger pit is too wet, so the water is not needed. As far as blading, I have five less employees since I started, so don't have any one to operate that water truck as they are using to haul gravel. Furthermore, the water trucks were approved by the L A P C board, which included commission representation approval. When responding to emergency incidents, disasters in the incident command, using the incident command system makes decision regarding all aspects of the emergency, not the commission. This includes entities responding to this incident. This is federally required. If the commission decides they don't want to use this incident command system, our county will lose all federal and state disaster emergency funds. This is the reason I inform you that I am required to house a water truck in a specific location. This reprimand is unwarranted and should be removed from my file. Item six, County Road twenty, east of Buella. This reprimand states during the summer of twenty-three, Commissioners Wolf and Bowman requested work be done on County Road twenty, which as of February twentieth, twenty-four was not fulfilled. This project was brought up in twenty-three, but we did not have the funds in our budget, so we budgeted for twenty twenty-four. The commission did not approve this project until May eighth, twenty twenty-four commission meeting, but I was reprimanded on February twentieth, twenty-four for not completing it. How is this possible? This project was started the week before, prior to my termination and completed the week of my termination, yet I was terminated based on being unfulfilled. This reprimand is unwarranted and should be removed from my file. Item seven, cooperation with the Mercer County Sheriff. This reprimand states the Sheriff's Department and an inability to reach the Highway Department refusal to respond to emergent situations and the Highway Department policies and to prevent employees from assisting during emergent events and also that Highway Department invoked a new procedure that will shut down service to the county during road closures and if unable to operate in hazardous environment, I may, may not be a good fit for this position. I did not implement any new policies to prevent assistance during emergent events, nor did I implement a new procedure to shut down service during road closures. The Highway Department has responded to grass fires, a bridge fire, a tipped over B truck and handful of other events. There have been a handful of times where the Sheriff's Office requested assistance during road closures that I can recollect once to get an operator to Southwest Water and Zap with the water treatment plant. Once opened a road for EMS transfer and other accident, we responded to every event. I did request log information from the Sheriff's Department regarding the request for service and the Highway Department's response. The following is a response I received from Sheriff Turnus and the state's attorney who affirmed Turnus' response. Quote, since interdepartmental requests, communication and records are something I am not required to keep on my, on file, my office doesn't. It would be a bad practice for working relationships in my opinion. Since the Sheriff's Office was unable to confirm a lack of response by the Highway Department and there is no documentation of the policies or procedures that I allegedly invoked, this reprimand cannot be verified and is such hearsay and should be removed from my file. Item eight, storm response twenty twenty-three. This reprimand states you informed Commissioner Bowman that the Highway Department would not assist the county unless directed by the sheriff. I was in contact with Sheriff Turnus after this event as he requested an operator to move a grain bin up on eighteen oh six. I contacted the operator to, to take the loader to move it. Sheriff Turnus then notified me that the State Highway Department was on its way already and assistance was not needed. I have also written a statement from Kevin from the State Highway Department that he was also contacted and sent the loader, but Sheriff Turnus called to say the grain bin had been removed and assistance was no longer needed. The emergency manager at the time stated the storm of twenty-three was not a disaster. All needed and requested responding units were there and no additional units were needed, including the emergency manager nor the Highway Department. The damage was private, was private property and all injuries and emergency help was taken care by the Fire Department, Sheriff's Office, dispatch and ambulance. No emergency responder entity is allowed to respond to an emergency incident, which is what we were trying to avoid. Commissioners have no authority over an emergency incident because in our county emergency plans, it states that the commission as a whole gives their authority to the incident commander. County emergency response is there to first stabilize property, then environment. An emergency and county funds cannot be used to repair a fixed private property. That is why we have insurance. Again, this incident occurred on August first, twenty twenty-three, so why was I reprimanded six months after the fact? Commissioner Bowman's reprimand on this is unfounded and I should be, it should be removed from my file. Item nine, teamwork and collaboration. This reprimand states an inability to partner with other departments in opposing work direction as, and request for support. My department has moved snow for the courthouse, we provided an operator and dozer to push filter for the cover at landfill. Our drivers haul dirt when the land, within landfill and haul scoria to the landfill, blade their roads and scrape County twenty-six after rain events. We loaded and hauled out a demolished building in Stanton for Jim Albert's. We borrow equipment to the landfill. We also mow Harmony Lake for the Sheriff's Department for the cops and kids annual fishing tournament event. As far as the accusation of refusing to allow the Sheriff's Department to refuel at the Highway Department, that is false as the Highway Department, the Sheriff's Department monthly for fuel and those invoices are readily available at the Highway Department office. Item ten, damaged missing signs. This reprimand states a failure to address requests by Commissioner Bowman and Wolf for missing and damaged signs. Alrey, my employees and myself are diligent about, about looking for the damaged or missing signs and they are continually replaced. Unless you can provide me with locations of specific signs that have not been replaced when requested, this reprimand cannot be verified. It is nothing but hearsay and should be removed from my file. Item eleven, bids County five and seven. This reprimand states I failed to address the request from Commissioners Wolf and Bowman to get bids for County five and seven. On April third, Commissioners Wolf and Bowman and myself met with Joe Kessel of Bronco Brothers to inspect County five and seven and were given a cost estimate at that time. Commissioners Wolf and Bowman and myself agreed the county could perform the work itself and decided to pull shoulders, regrade, add material. Shoulders have been pulled and the road regraded, but no material has, or material has yet to be added. I do, I do have the text message from Joe Kessel confirming when the meeting occurred. This reprimand is false and should be removed from my file. Item twelve, gravel exploration. Commissioner Bowman and Wolf stated I have failed to address the request to identify new strategies for gravel exploration and finding new sources of gravel. I negotiated a contract with Randy Byron, which was approved on May first, twenty twenty-four. Sundry sand and gravel did holes at two locations last fall. A proposal from Terricon was forboring and presented and approved at the June fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting and I scheduled Terricon to test at two locations on June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. And a couple county employees, including Commissioner Bowman himself, also looked on a spot off of Highway forty-nine. In fact, uh, minimum maintenance signs. The reprimand states multiple roadway signs have been identified that have been installed without Commissioner approval. I have, I have not put any new maintenance signs up since I've been in my position. We only replace signs that were already there. The only minimum maintenance signs we discussed were the one on the Dan Green Road, which we had replaced and then removed per Rick and Gene's request and one on Eugene Silo's road, which was also moved per Rick's, Rick's request. Unless you can prove there are other minimum maintenance signs put up during my tenure without Commissioner approval, this reprimand is unfounded and should be removed from my file. Item fourteen, policy states roads, road closed by mines. This reprimand states Commissioner Bowman requests I begin work on a policy to address the, the roads that have been used by mines and return to them to operation. First off, I cannot create policy, that is Commissioner's job. We currently maintain and blade these roads to keep them operational for aid use and provide, I can provide maintenance logs. I previously noted Commissioner Bowman and Wolf, both held the Highway Department portfolio until Commissioner Bowman resigned as my portfolio on July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three per an Office of Attorney General's Opinion Guide in meeting with, that two portfolio holders of one department establishes a quorum and violates open meeting laws. This was seven months of violation that should have been pointed out by the state's attorney, yet it was ignored. Commissioners Bowman and Wolf continue to violate this opinion by coming to my office together to harass and threaten me and my employees. Commissioner Bowman never truly removed himself as portfolio, he just made the motion to cover his disregard for following any guidance or policy, just as he did with my termination. Commissioner Taylor was originally assigned to take over the Highway Department portfolio in January of twenty-four, but Commissioner Bowman insisted on taking my portfolio. This was the only way he could ensure he'd have the power to terminate me. Commissioner Bowman took over my portfolio on January third, twenty twenty-four and on February twentieth, twenty twenty-four presented me a written reprimand. Is that really even enough time to thoroughly evaluate me or was this again an Attorney General's violation of two Commissioners working together to get rid of me? It is clear, it is clear the written reprimand. reprimand dated February twentieth, twenty twenty-four, which was presented to me by both Commissioners, again violation, was done by both Commissioners as they directly say I was not following directives from both of them. I was also told by Commissioner Bowman that February twentieth, twenty twenty-four written reprimand would not be placed in my files. It was not formally approved by the whole commission, but would be kept on a file in the state's attorney's office. Even though Policy two oh two access to personnel file states Mercer County shall maintain employment records on all employees, which records and files shall be maintained in a specific personnel location located in the office of the Mercer County Auditor or such other county official as authorized by the Mercer County Commission. Mercer County shall maintain only official personnel file for each employee. A field or supervisory file may be maintained in the department where the employee works, which may include such things as notes or records of an employee's performance or the purpose of preparing evaluations or possible disciplinary action. I contacted the auditor's office a few times after Commissioner Bowman and Wolf, and I asked if a written reprimand has been placed in my file. I was told it hadn't. When I requested my personnel file from H R Director Ellis Grynsteiner, who took over the position on March first, twenty twenty-four, it contained three documents of concern. A verbal reprimand from April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, which was not signed, which was not signed and only stated Commissioners Wolf and Bowman had a meeting with Ken Miller. That was considered a verbal warning, but no specifics or direction were noted, and no follow-up ever done, and this document was not in my file previously. A copy of the February twentieth, twenty-four written reprimand, that again was not previously in my file, and a write to Cobra document with the date of June seventh, twenty twenty-three, or June seventh, twenty twenty-four, yet the copy I received was dated June tenth, twenty twenty-four. How did the reprimand, how did how did two reprimands turn up in my file after Ellis taking possession of it and without the full board acting on it? I then contacted the auditor to request what was my personnel file prior to it being turned over to Ellis, and her response was before Ellis Grynstein received your personnel file, the only thing that was in there was a positive review from your work for twice, two thousand fifteen to two thousand eighteen. No other personnel reviews were in your file. The auditor confirmed she was shown the document on April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, but it was not put in my file as did not contain any signatures, including mine. I believe H R Director Ellis Grynsteiner added these documents for Commissioners Wolf and Bowman to aid in their termination of me. I question the honesty, integrity, and trustworthiness of Ellis as well. She is creating legal risk for the county by assisting Commissioners Bowman in my termination with disregard to the board, putting documents in my personnel file, which were not previously there, and failing to have accurate documents in my personnel file since there was a different copy of the Cobra in my file than was actually given to me. Can the termination letter from Rick and Ellis and the Cobra documents be legally put in my file without a legal separation of employment, which needs to be voted on by the board? I would also like to note that the second paragraph of the termination letter state signed by Rick and Ellis states six hours' leave will be paid out at a rate of twenty-five parentheses twelve point five percent computed at the base of your salary. If the Board of Commissioners choose to move forward with my termination, I will be expecting my sick leave to be paid out at the rate of twenty-five percent as stated in my termination letter, and all documents referencing my termination will be reissued need to be reissued with the proper date of legal separation. A copy of this appeal will also be in my filed personnel, and a formal public apology issued to me by Gene, Rick, Jerry, and Todd. The introductory statement of the Mercer County Policy Manual states the citizens of Mercer County elect the Board of County Commissions to conduct the general business of the county. In that capacity, the Board of County Commissioners shall oversee the implementation and enforcement of such policies with the assistance of the elected officials and appointed department heads, who are responsible for the day-to-day activities within their departments and are accountable to the Board of County Commissioners. As a department head, I am accountable to the board as a whole. I have never received any negative feedback from Liza, Jamie, or Travis regarding patron requests. Is it possible that every patron in the county only contacts Commissioner Wolf and Bowman to complain about my job performance, and they haven't provided any concrete proof of these allegations? Oral reprimand from Rick and Jean, not the board. Written reprimand from Rick and Jean, not the board. The board has never given me these reprimands, and there hasn't wasn't any board action to put them in my employee file. So where are they? Why are they there? Rick and Jean are constantly micromanaging my department and meddling in all day-to-day activities. It is evident in the constant directives given in the February twentieth, twenty twenty-four reprimand. But again, why follow a silly policy manual? The worst part of this whole situation is that these are elected officials abusing their power, harassing and threatening employees to push personal agendas and just playing the old bullies. I am a veteran of twenty-one and a half years of service with the National Guard, one tour in Iraq. I was a high school and junior high science teacher for ten years and a chief water utility operator for City of Dickens for five years, and I have never had a reprimand in any of those positions. I worked at the Mercer County Highway Department for fourteen years, eleven of which have been the road superintendent, and I have never had a reprimand or oral written until Jean and Rick decided it was their mission to get rid of me. This is Jean's second term, and Rick are prior to Rick coming on board. He has never come to me with any issues or negative feedback from anyone, so what changed? Is Rick retaliating at me because I was chosen for this job in two thousand thirteen over him? Whatever the reason for these Commissioners will not stop until they are voted out of office. No person should ever have to endure the threats and harassment that I have endured from Jean and Rick over the last year. I pray that no other appointed employee of the county has to feel the wrath of Rick and Jean because they will stop at nothing to terminate you for absolutely no reason if that's what they feel like doing. The information I have provided clearly shows that termination was based on false claims and accusation was not warranted. I request my position to be reinstated. And I also have a letter here from a former Commissioner that I would like to read to the board. Dear Board of County Commissioners, Mercer County, June twentieth, twenty twenty-four, I write this letter as a concerned citizen and a former Commissioner. I'm learning the termination of Ken Miller by a single board member. I became alarmed. This is not proper or believe illegal. While I was a Commissioner, I was instructed legally a single board member cannot terminate an appointed official. It requires a vote of the board. In fact, even suggestions of leadership or supervision should be discussed by the board. It is why we have a five-member board, to keep only any one or two members from dictating how they believe it should be. Further, I have learned a letter of censorship was placed in Ken's file. I ask you, who put this letter in Ken's file? Was it approved by the majority of vote from the board, or or again, one or two individuals dictating how they want things? Regarding the letter censorship, I ask why each of these points was not brought up and discussed with our superintendent when they just when they occurred, so they could be addressed and possibly rectified. And I object to the unsubstantiated accusations. Each accusation, if true, must be substantiated with proof, documentation, date, and sign. I had the road before as a Commissioner and found Mr. Miller willing to listen to suggestions. These suggestions were brought up before the board and were ensured they were okay. I found Mr. Miller to be open to possible suggestions, and I always inform the board of possible concerns they might have for the county. Regarding the termination of Mr. Miller, I believe an apology is warranted to him by Mr. Bowman. It should be written, signed by Mr. Bowman, dated, and put in Mr. Miller's file. I believe Mr. Miller should receive full reimbursement, all paid, and that day forward. I believe that the Board of Commissioners should also apologize formally and write to Mr. Miller for improper way this termination occurred. Without full of board approval, without the explanation of Mr. Miller, that the board would be respectively march away. And I do have everything in this packet that I will give copies to Dan from the press and all the Commissioners and the state's attorney and Carmen Reed.
No.
Where we're at is the appointed department heads are supervised by an individual portfolio holder that the commission has put in that position. So at this point with the appeal, this commission has to decide whether they're going to overturn the portfolio holder's decision, or if they're going to affirm it. The commission can gather further information if requested and decide how to proceed from
So I can ask for a motion to either way?
Yep.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I would move to reinstate Ken Miller.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Nay.
Jamie?
Nay.
Jean, nay. Motion defeated. Okay, call the meeting back to order. Next on the agenda is the Jim Casper Pebble Pebble
Thank you. Everyone should have gotten two documents. One was originally provided earlier, and then at the request of the state's attorney, we put the variance approval into a separate document. So the original agreement, the only thing that was changed, which was sent over this morning, was that variance portion was just taken out and moved into that separate variance approval request. So the agreement goes over everything that I outlined in the last meeting that we were here. So today, we're looking for approval of both of the documents by the commission to approve the transfer of the trail to the county, and then the variance approval for those two tracks that are owned by Mercer
Are they contingent on each other?
We it is requested that everything be approved together, yes.
Okay. So then I would ask for a motion to approve, I gotta see it here, approve the James Casper variance and I don't even know the word to use, turning over the property to the county. Do I have a motion for that?
Did Todd review this? Like the new one that you got this morning? Do we want Todd?
Just want him separated?
I just asked for a motion to approve this.
Okay, the agreement or the variance?
They they want a contingent on each other, so both of them together.
Okay.
We can do that in one motion then, or should we do separate, or we can do it either way?
Well, it was said before. I don't know if I like the idea of
Well, they want it on as one, so.
What were you saying, Tom?
I don't really like the idea of it appearing that we're selling a variance.
Right.
So what the commission has to decide is number one is the variance acceptable, because you have the final say on that. The commission also has the final say on whether or not we're going to accept responsibility for any other property.
And when you say accept responsibility?
Because this trail in the agreement is, excuse me, I grabbed a handful of nuts when I stepped down. All right, repeat your question again.
So when you say when we accept responsibility
Yeah.
of this, what does that actually mean?
Yeah, because if you accept the agreement, now the county is responsible for this trail. Right now, it's private property with no control of the county other than zoning and those types of things. Under this agreement, the county would now have this trail.
So we would need to maintain it, and we would have liability?
Opens issues, yeah. You can declare minimum maintenance, and that limits exposure to a certain degree. This trail does end on core controlled property, and in the past, the Corps has put the fence back up and put allowed it to become back down. They could change their mind tomorrow.
I think this is something that should this Pebble Beach Trail, that should be addressed with Buella Park Board, not the county.
Well, I think if we take it over, I think then we should have discussions with that park district because they had done maintenance on it in the past, and it's kind of recreational. But whatever order we need to do this in, I mean, I'm I'm in support of maintaining a public access through that.
I have no problem maintaining. I have no problem maintaining public access, but I do not want to take on the responsibility of a trail that goes, can end up going to nowhere. Cause there's no guarantees that the Core is going to leave that. I've, I've lived here all my life. I've seen it fenced off, I've seen it reopened, I've seen it fenced off, and I've seen it reopened. So, and there's no guarantees. I think this is, uh, affects the Beale Park Board way more than it does the county as a whole. And I just have issues, um, acquiring a piece of property, even if it's given to us, and now all of a sudden we're gonna become liable. And I don't care what anybody says. The next thing we're gonna have to address is, well, aren't you gonna do any maintenance on that road? Well, we put up a minimum maintenance roadside and I don't know where that's gotten us. I said, then, then, then all of a sudden we got people getting stuck, we got people. And, and yeah, and then we're gonna have to go out there and we're gonna be told, well, we gotta do something with that. So I, I just have reservations where the entire county is gonna have to take on responsibility for a, um, a trail down whi- which parallels the park because, uh, it's, it's, a lot of the people who, uh, stay there at Beale Bay will, will go down there. And, and yes, there are people who don't stay at Beale Bay that go down there, but I think it'd be more of a park board, should be interested in this rather than the county.
Just one other item, it's, I kinda danced around it, but under paragraph C and D says the county shall be solely responsible for maintenance and/or liability there may be related to Pebble Beach Trail. Under D, the county shall dedicate, or, we're gonna have to, is the county guarantee public access ingress and egress easement, allowing public access to, to, uh, Pebble Beach. I'm not telling you pass it, I'm not telling you don't pass it. That's, this is a decision for the commission to decide.
And if I may, address those two. C is just saying that Mr. Casper is not gonna have any responsibility of it. It's gonna be owned by the county, so tha- that's how it works. If it's county property, the county's responsible for it, the previous landowner is not. That's not saying that someone else couldn't provide maintenance, it's just saying it's the, the county's to do with because it will be their property. And as far as D, it's because the intent is, it's a public trail, it remains a public trail. That's all that D is saying, is that the county shall keep it as a public trail.
Well, I'll say, rest of the commission feel. I mean, a motion either way.
Well, to start things off, I would move to approve the variance. We'll start there, as presented.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second to the motion? Do I have a second to a motion, to the motion to accept the James Casper proposal?
Uh, the motion was for approving the variance. Correct.
Oh, not both?
No, just the variance.
I'll second for discussion.
Essentially, the variance would, I'm, I'm gonna pick out key points, but seventy-five foot setback from center of the paved road as it relates to track two A and two B, uh, twenty-five foot setback from the Pebble Beach Trail, and a ten-foot setback from U.S. Army Corps of Engineers land.
Jennifer, for, I should have brought my other papers, but two A and two B, which side is what? Sorry.
Okay. I'm, I'm motion and a second to approve the variance. I'm not gonna read the whole thing. We got it in front of us, we'll give a copy to the-
A is south, B is north?
Yes.
Okay, well, get a copy to Dana. Do you have a copy?
He looked at mine.
Okay. I'm not gonna read the whole thing.
But, uh, for discussion, um, as far as the core property, um, setback, our county enacts a fifty-foot setback, um, the ten-foot is similar to what McLean County does. Um, I believe our setback on the paved road is a hundred and fifty feet. They're requesting that to go in half at seventy-five. And the twenty-five foot setback from the trail, I think is just a setback. I don't know if there's actually a requirement that goes against that, is there?
The south side, the south track, does that then tie into this new campground?
It's not, they're both on the other side of the road.
They're both on the other, but north-south of each other, but not on the other side, not on the south side of the road.
Correct.
Or on the north side.
Hundred and fifty foot from the center of-
From the paved road? Center of a paved road?
Yeah, based on the variance.
And then the twenty-five foot setback from the Pebble Beach Trail, well, that, that's really, uh, yeah, that's quite an open-ended variance because there's nothing here that says how wide the trail is. Now we'd get into opinions here and I would say, well, that would be the same as any county access, which, I forget what they are. County easement on a access, I know it's well over sixty-six feet. So, you know, twenty-five feet, you'd be encroaching on that trail if there'd ever be improvements on it. And can we even do anything about a setback from the Co- Corps of Engineer land?
Each county establishes their own setback to it.
From Core land?
Yeah, the Core does not have a specific-
They don't care if we go right up against their property.
They're public land, so you'd have the right to go right up to it.
Okay. I was unaware of that.
Yeah. Okay. That was a question I had for the Core, and that's what they told me.
Okay. Any further discussion?
What's that?
At least today.
Correct.
I'm sorry, just Corps of Engineers. Depends on who I call, what day and what month, on what answers I get.
I, yeah.
Right. That's why I said when I talked to them, that's what they told me.
Okay, any further discussion on the variance? Mary Non, Travis?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Nay.
Rick?
Nay.
Pardon?
Nay.
And Jeanne, nay. That did not pass. Motion to adjourn. Now, in the agreement, that was the variance. Oh, and that's for the Pebble Pebble Beach Trail.
If I may, before we move on to that, is there a specific concern with the variance levels that are being requested?
Yeah, the hu- the seventy-five foot from the center of the paved road. That's, there's a lot of traffic up there and that, we're getting too close. The next thing that's gonna be addressed after that is speed on that corner. When someone builds up there, I mean, seventy-five feet, that's a little bit more than from me to that wall. And there'd be a building there, and then we end up with, uh, especially in the winter, even though there's not much traffic, then we have snow piled up there. We'll have snowbanks, cause we have predominant northwest winds. And then that'll be blocked, and then we got, uh, having to send the county up there to remove the snow. So I ju- these setbacks were put in place for reasons and, uh, there're maybe times when they get changed, but in this case, it's a, that's a heavily used road. And I don't wanna encroach on that road any more than we.
So your position is that no variance is gonna be granted from that? You're affirming that it needs to stay at the hundred and fifty feet regardless if it makes it, so it's not-
That's my, I'm one.
Right, no, I understand, I'm just trying to understand, so I go back to the client and explain the position.
No, I'll, I'll be, in, 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 in the location that this is at, I, I, I would, I wouldn't approve anything less than a hundred and fifty feet. That's traveled a lot.
And I understand, and I guess my concern is this board approved the rezoning to a residential lot and approved the separation into the two tracks, which should be assumed that they want to build on it, but in, if no variance is granted, you're essentially saying they cannot ever build on it.
Whoa, 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 now you're, you're, we're doing the horse in front of the cart or, you know, the chicken and the egg thing? When you buy this property, you know what the setbacks are. So you don't buy the property knowing what the setbacks are and then come to the commission and say, I want a variance. The very first thing you should have done was ask for the variance before you even purchased the property or-
Mr. Casper already owned the property, so I don't think that's accurate.
But now they're asking for a variance, so this, are, are you, I didn't fully follow your question, but if you're talking about selling it or being able to sell it or purchasing it or-
No, I'm saying the county approved it being changed from agricultural to a residential zoning. Obviously, if it's changed to residential zoning, that's because a home would be built on it. The county also approved the plat, which divided into two separate lots, still remaining residential. With the current setbacks, you cannot build a residential home.
I understand that.
And so that's, that's where I'm coming from is, I believe that the county created exactly what the variance was put in place for, where there is now a hardship, where you have a residential lot where you cannot build a residence on it, which meets the very burden that's required for a variance.
The variance was there before this was even done. If you wanna change it to, uh, residential, it's not a problem.
It's already residential, is what I'm telling you.
Right. That was not a problem. But you knew at the time what the variance was. That's not our, uh, decision to make, that you, you wanna change it from whatever to, the variances are there. So if you say, well, we wanna change this from egg to residential, okay, go ahead. That's, w- w- if we allow that or not, it's fine. But then you say, well, wait a minute, now I can't build on it. Well, yeah, the variance was there before you, we even changed it, so you knew that. Don't, don't come back to me now and say, well, your variance doesn't allow it, even though you approved this, uh, change. Yeah, we approved the change. You knew what the variance was before we approved the change.
I think you're misusing the word variance. We have setbacks.
Yeah.
And a variance is a change of the established setbacks, but-
And to Jennifer's point, is that when this was originally subdivided, that was lot two.
Correct.
And it was approved residential. Now, somewhere in between lot two and the rest of that development being, um, developed, for lack of a better term, somehow it got changed at lot two, now it has lot A and B two, or two A and B. I, the very, the setbacks have been there throughout this whole thing. I think that's your point, Jeanne.
Mm-hmm.
And there's nothing prohibiting something from owning A and B and building across the A and B lot lines as long as they meet the setbacks. And what the vote has concluded is that, yeah, you can build on part of lot two B, just, we're not gonna vary the setbacks. So like, this is lot, I, I know they're not shaped nice and square, but if they're like this, and, okay, a hundred and fifty foot back is partially on two A and tar- two B, that can still be done. So, i- i- am I capturing, I'm trying to clarify because frankly, I'm, I'm as confused too, Jeanne. You kinda worked this into a, where the hell are we?
I'm not, I'm not necessarily in agreeance with the seventy-five foot, cause I, I do get what Jeanne is saying is that's close to the road, it's a curve, it's trafficked. I would maybe, I personally would maybe not be opposed to more of like a hundred foot versus the full one fifty, because Jennifer, I also understand what you're saying is that's a lot of room difference.
You ask me, there's four other ones.
Right, well, I was asking everyone in general to go back and I'm trying to see if maybe a different variance would work.
And I don't know what, like, I've been up there, but I haven't taken a tape measure. Like, what does seventy-five feet versus a hundred versus a hundred and twenty-five versus a hundred and fifty, what, what does that look like in that space?
It, it varies, it varies considerably.
This is from the center of the road.
Yeah, that was my biggest concern.
But that's what I'm thinking, what is the, what is the distance? You know, is seventy-five feet right in the middle of the ditch, but a hundred feet is at the back slope of the ditch?
Seventy-five feet would get you about just past the, what do you call it, in slope?
No, I'll give the back slope.
Back, just past the back slope.
That's what I said.
Sorry.
There was the other, just, just around the other side of, if there was a-
So, I mean, we've had this diagrammed out in the past. And when you look at the fifty-foot setback from-
Should we go on a field trip?
Yeah, good, but, um, so when you take the fifty feet from the Core land and you take the hundred and fifty feet, it creates a small-
Little, just, little area.
Where, you know, an average-sized house probably would not fit in there. And it's because of all, how, all the setbacks encompasses this property, and I'm talking two A. Two B's a little bit different, however, two B, um, has, has a lot of trees and stuff like that, that it would be hard to visualize how that actually, um, ends up. Now, when we talk variance, um, kinda what was mentioned, it creates an undue hardship, um, and essentially it, the way our setbacks are, it makes it nearly impossible for this property in particular uh, to be used for a residential use, to be used for really any use, um. So, you know, that's why I was in support of a variance, because in this situation, I think it makes sense. Another lot, probably not, but, you know, I guess what Jennifer is asking is at what distance, either from the Core land, if we're not, if we don't have a problem going from fifty to ten, that's probably a non-issue, if it's the road, um, and I, I guess I don't know how, if we shrunk from the fifty to ten, how that increases the buildability of that lot, but it would add some. Probably not enough, but it would add some.
Yeah.
And, and when we talk setbacks, we're talking physical structure, so house, garage, um, if we're talking um, septic system or driveway, things like that, that's, um, not trees, um,
I don't have a phone on the backside.
No, yeah, mine is more just from the road.
It's just from the road.
Especially because it's from the center of the road and it's on a curve. Right, is my biggest concern. The other ones?
Well, to try and be in all fairness, come back with something that you would consider a minimum amount or a maximum amount, which way does, do I have to word that? That would be from the center of the road in which you could probably develop something.
Can I make a suggestion?
Well, sure.
Because we're all trying to visualize this and apparently I created the Shakespearean problem of two B or not two B. Um, is it, is two A's next to the road?
Yes.
I think they're both.
They're both.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, okay, you know, the mo-
This is what it looks like.
The vo- the vote has been taken, but-
Slither right near.
Yeah. So-
This one, correct?
That's two A, that's two B.
What I'm trying to do is make sure that the commission isn't doing something that could be labeled arbitrary and capricious. And with the questions and comments everybody's made, maybe, um, I can impose on each one of you, maybe make a trip out there to get a firm-
I was gonna say that, I'm, I'm gonna go out there as long as I don't get chased off the Casper land. If there's not gonna be a problem walking on that land, I'll do some measuring myself. But I don't wanna get told I'm trespassing.
I bet they'd be nice enough to even give you a bottle of water. I bet they'd be nice enough to even give you a bottle of water if it's hot when you're out there. This is Mercer County.
Now you're talking bribery.
No, that's not bribery.
Okay. And, and I have walked it, so I have.
I'm going to go up there myself.
When common courtesy becomes called bribery, it might be time for me to retire.
So.
I'm just being.
In lieu of the, the variance request, do you, would you like us to postpone the agreement until variance is figured out?
Yes.
Okay.
Because I mean, it doesn't make sense to vote on agreement if it's contingent.
If I take out a lot of courtesy to me announce an open meeting, I could take everybody in here for a field trip.
Well, and even though the variance has been denied, once everybody takes a look at it, it, it's not prohibited for Jennifer to ask to be put back on with different languages, as been mentioned, what have you. It's gathering more information. Decisions I made when I was thirty, I would never make at sixty, because I've gathered more information.
Well.
So you're not running.
Oh, we don't want to wait thirty years. Just to be clear.
I won't be here in thirty years, I'll hopefully have a heart.
But we just changed the set. Oh, no, we didn't change it, okay.
Right.
But if we were to consider the ten-foot setback from the Corbin near line, and it's a, what is it right now?
Fifty, is what we have in our code, is fifty.
Okay, so that adds forty feet right there.
To the, to the north line and to the west line.
Yes.
Yep. So, just so everybody knows.
And what I'm saying is, is that everybody gets more familiar with the facts, this can be reconsidered, it can be resubmitted.
Which I'm def- definitely not opposed, if the court don't care that you build right up against their property, I, I don't care. So, that'd be like me telling you that you can't build up against Mr. Schwartz's property, he has no problem.
And that was, or my client's request, not something that the court wanted or that's considered the county, he didn't think it should be built right on top of it, so he wanted it.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a good idea, you get high water and then a boat in your living room, it'd be a hell of a conversation piece.
Then you need to see this property, because if a boat goes onto this property, we have some issues.
Everybody else is.
We need to worry about what everybody's doing.
Bismarck's gone.
Things have been so serious.
Postpone your, until you come back to us.
Can we just put it on for the next meeting? Well, I get everyone enough time to walk it up.
When is our next meeting?
July third.
The third of July.
Yeah, I gotta be here for that one, too, so.
You're not going to be here?
Oh, I said, I, I think I've got to be here at that one.
Nobody, okay, so.
I don't need to visit, I've been out there, so.
Now that you drew, now that you told me what's A and what's B.
You're on the agenda for the third of July.
Ten thirty, Jennifer.
I just still would be more.
Thank you. I'll drive out there.
Anything else? Oh, they're leaving. Okay. Okay. Well, let's, let's get Alice back up, let's get that completed before we move on to other business.
Now, I need to go. Chairman?
Yes.
Unfortunately, I need to go, I have an appointment I got to get to.
What I'm going to tell you, you can.
Huh? If you, if you want me here? For that? Yep, then let's do that one first. Yep.
Give you a report that I sent you.
Okay, before. Before Liza leaves.
Alice wanted to address the EM before I left.
Yeah, we got another, we want you here.
Okay, alright.
First, okay. Um, under the advice of counsel, we, uh, need to.
I think I can make this quicker.
Okay.
Uh, the motion to reinstate Mr. Miller was denied.
Right.
In effect, that gives, that, that lets the reinstatement stand. And if the commission wishes to make that a formal vote, instead of a, we denied the reinstatement, so it stands. As it is right now, the termination stands. So, do you want, as a commission, to have a vote affirming the portfolio holder's decision?
I think it'd be best. I think it'd be best. That I get a motion to affirm that, do I use the word affirm?
Well, you can't. Essentially, by denying the reinstatement, you have affirmed. It just wasn't stated clearly. So I guess, maybe the best way to handle this right now would be is that, um, realizing that's the decision, we don't have to do anything further. Just wanted to bring it to your attention, essentially.
No, I'd like, I'd like a, a formal vote on the termination. So, I'm, I'm sitting here thinking of the language.
What I'm saying is that by denying the reinstatement, you're in effect allowing the termination to stand.
So you think we're okay with that, then?
I do. Because there was no motion to, to, there was a motion to reinstate him, which would be appealing the final decision of the appointed supervisor, the portfolio holder, Mr. Bowman, Rick. And one thing I do want to bring up, um, two commissioners does not make a quorum on a five-person attorney general opinion that has been referred to, when you have a three-person commission.
We know that one.
Yeah.
But.
That created a lot of issues where a lot more counties that went to the five-person, if I, something along that line is what led, if I'm remembering correct, because it's been quite a few years.
Do we need to do anything so we can move on to Liza's topic?
Okay.
Yeah, well, well, okay. We'll move on then, what's the next, uh, you had, had one, Liza or Alice?
Yeah, Alice, and, and I wanted to address the EM position.
Yes.
Okay.
In my report that I sent to you, Lynette Sabbath, who's assisting EM BG grant, is questioning why only ten thousand dollars a year, because Oliver County's paying fifteen thousand. She does not feel that is adequate for that role. So, I am requesting to increase that wage at this point. It is a whole lot of responsibility, it is another role. I don't call twenty-four-seven even more, I have to work closely with both Oliver and Mercer Kelly's, um, law enforcement.
As we briefly discussed yesterday, because it came up at the state's tennis convention, flood insurance, there's some things we're going to need to do to make sure that we have that available for our citizens. There's been a few changes in the regs, and we are dealing with federal paperwork bureaucracy.
So, Alice, you're requesting wage increase from Oliver County? What are you requesting?
No, just increasing my wage, instead of the ten thousand.
Increasing wage for EM position?
Yes.
From ten thousand to what?
I would like to see up to twenty thousand.
That's the same amount that Oliver's paying.
Oliver's paying fifteen towards ours, yeah.
Well, they're reimbursed, basically, they're more or less reimbursing on Mercer County, they're not paying for the position.
Better word choice.
Wow, where does that get the salary then, your total salary?
Well, as HR, she was sixty-five, we offered ten, which would get her up to seventy-five for HR and EM. So she's requesting up to eighty-five, if I'm not putting words in your mouth? Yeah.
What do you want to do?
Terry did not see a wage increase because he was an elected official, so he could not accept the wage when he was doing the emergency.
So it wasn't that, we shouldn't have probably done something, or we just couldn't because of his circumstances that he had at that time. I just feel, like, since Oliver County is putting in fifteen, it seems very odd for us to not at least. And have a piece of it as well, so that's.
If the job were separate, but it's a combined job now, at eighty-five thousand.
It's not combined, Jean, it's totally separate from HR, it's a total different role, total different responsibilities from the HR role.
And, and remember, we actually had her interview for this, it wasn't, uh, here's your added job.
And if you had hired somebody outside of the county, it would have been thirty-five or thirty-eight thousand, you would have.
With the fifteenth attributed from Oliver.
Plus the benefits and all that.
Yeah.
When I originally did it, you weren't here, I had to adjust the big HR down to seventy-five percent.
Yeah.
But that may interfere, that'd be like a budget thing.
That's what I was kind of looking at in my head for that. Essentially, it's like seventy-five percent of her duties would be HR, twenty-five percent would be EM, is what I had discussed. But then, when she brought up that Oliver County is putting in as much as it is, I don't feel it's right that we put in less than what Oliver County has even given us for it.
Well, what's the wish of the commission?
I, I don't disagree with that, maybe we just need to look up lessening the amounts as a whole common budget.
Right, right.
Two would have been more, too, and I'll have a better understanding of how much EM actually will take part of my weekly duties, you know, it's just, I'm going to start keeping track of everything, so that way we'll have a better, something, idea of what's right.
Okay, I need a motion from a commissioner and an effective date, and if, and an effective date.
In all the start discussion, I would move that we offer Alice for the combined duties of HR and EM at eighty-five thousand dollars annually, and, um, I would make it effective, um, when she accepts the EM duties.
And I'll second that.
Okay, effective when she accepts.
I'd rather have a.
When John is expected, and Liza's second.
I would rather see it like an effective date, like July first, or, I don't care if you say June twentieth, but rather than when she accepts. What if she accepts in retrospect? I'm just being.
Jean.
You're on one today, there.
Okay, anyway, that's just me. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Motion passed.
I do think this needs to be a budget talk discussion.
Yes.
Not downplaying you.
Okay, you got some art?
No, I have to, Liza has to leave. Thank you.
No, you got to stay. I'll bet you not gonna. Just, let's, just wait till Liza leaves, give her time to, I don't want to call a recess, I just. Don't want to lock them in the middle of discussion.
And then Liza left at twelve forty.
Twelve forty, twelve forty-one.
I'm out the door.
All right.
Sorry.
Good luck, have a good day. Okay, now we can only have one more commissioner leave. All right, continue, Alice.
Okay, so, it was brought to my attention, there were some issues with, um, the need for department heads to have company credit cards, and Todd can attest to this, if you'd like.
I've got a trial coming up, we got to ship a witness in from the east coast. And it, being able to do this as quick as we need to, we can get cheaper flights. In the past, I've just said, no, I'll leave it at the auditor's office, but that's caused a couple delays, nobody's fault, nobody's fault, it's just, okay, how do we do that? Well, what, what Alice and I've talked about is that if the department heads have it, and I would recommend each department head have the same policy I'm putting into place, that gets locked into a drawer, so that it isn't going to mi, get misplaced.
And, and.
It, it just, so that, okay, this comes up, we can do it right now. And then we've got policies, and Alice is going to fine-tune those as to what they can and cannot be used for. What each department head needs to know is that is only for county expenses. There was an elected official in another county that used it to upgrade flights to take their spouse with on a.
Right.
A training center in.
I mean, I feel like there has to be a level of responsibility to the individuals that have it.
Right.
But also for day-to-day workflow for the individuals of the departments. I've said this for a while, I mean, that, it, it would, I think it needs to.
I'm, I am one who is very cautious with it, right up front, I, I oppose it. I can see the need, but, uh, in all my dealings over the years, that's one of the, one of the items that has come before, at meetings, where, uh, it has gotten the people, gotten people into big trouble and jail time.
And I agree with that, but I, I don't think that the department should have to take three weeks to get some things sometimes, because.
Fully understand.
And it's nobody's fault, it just is the way it's working. Alice, if you can get a list, communicate with us, make sure the department heads understand, because honestly, their budgets are their responsibility. If they go over, I'm not micromanaging any of that. And we don't have an issue, but Alice, we got to work close on that, the auditor's office has to know that same list that department head is getting. You know what I mean? If we can set up things, I don't think there'll be any issues, it's just we have to keep track, because every month we get a list, and we have to have vouchers for every expense.
You're going to have a paperwork to go with.
We have to, and that's the concern, is not getting a paperwork.
Policy that would cover that, each department got their own credit card, it would cover all that.
I mean, I feel like it's no different than they get a, a bill right now, and they have to have a voucher to go with it and justification for it. Yes, they do. I would love to say we can work off of all cash and check in all the things, but it's not.
Okay, so.
And charge accounts aren't necessarily always an option for every entity.
And I did, um, create a charge in, through an actual, and every county does have that, except for us so far, each department has their own credit card.
Well, and here's the thing, too, not every department head needs a credit card, like you said, Jean, why abuse it? I mean, yeah, certain ones do, but let them come before the commission and say, okay, this is why we need it, so at least we got some control there, and not just giving everybody a credit card. To start, at least to start, let's start slow.
My question is, my, my question is, okay. Todd's in the room here, our state's attorney. So. The state's attorney's office applies for a credit card, that's going to have to carry a personal name, does it not? You can't just get one under state's attorney.
It's still under.
It would be under the state.
Well, yeah, it's under the county credit card.
But we have a state credit card.
Okay, so.
So like Gwen does payments, it's under her name, but under the state umbrella.
Right.
So now, let's say you get one, yes, it's going to be in your name.
But it's, yeah. It's, it's no different if you have your spouse on your credit card.
Or anything, it's just your name on that card, but it's not, so, it's not Todd's credit or Gwen's credit or anything, it's under the county.
Okay, I did not know that was possible.
Yep.
Yeah, and this just happened, not that long.
It, it's just like in your personal life, if your spouse and you have a credit card, you get one with your name.
No, don't compare that.
No, because then that's your personal credit, where this isn't our personal.
It works essentially.
I'm going to, I would say we got to, uh, police it very carefully. We, we need to, and I know this is, where the abuse always started was, the example that was just cited is, uh, uh, I get a credit card for my department, and now I go on, uh, a trip. Well, now all of a sudden, I have a meal, I include my wife's meal. And then when the credit card bill comes, I just pay it, no one knows any different. Well, after about five years of doing this, I forget, knowingly forget to pay for my wife's meal, and now the county pays for it.
Saying is, is, you can't put your wife's meal on.
Well, I, yes, I know that, but I did anyway.
And in very simple, I, so, what we normally do on these, if people are going to conferences, what have you, is they get per diem. So, that credit card should not be used for that. Can be used for the motel. It could be used for, if you're taking a plane, or a bus, or a train. Um, in this instance, that brought this up, and, and the reason it became a bit of an issue is because we had the trial set, and yes, whenever I ship witnesses in, I buy, I, I make sure we include the travel insurance. Because in this case, the defense attorney, following the advice of his physical therapist and his doctor, blew his back out, and can't sit through a week-long trial that would've been going this week. Things happen, so and as far as protections, let's say I'm the one that misuses it, or Terry's the one that misuses it, he's not here, but he agreed with this. We not only have the county upset at us, we can lose our professional licenses over it.
I understand that.
Yeah.
And that, I, I know this, I'm not.
This is not a credit card that's gonna go in the state's attorney or sheriff's pocket, this is gonna be locked in the office and used only for those things that are within our budget and within our purview.
I'm just throwing caution out there, like I'm saying, it's, we gotta, and it's one of the number one things that got people in trouble, and I, I know
And at this.
One that spent jail time over it, because.
And I understand Carmen's point of like, starting slow, but I also don't wanna discriminate against the land use office that like, oh, sorry, you don't get one, but this road department gets one, because they're a bigger department, I don't, I don't. I don't, I don't want anybody to feel that way, is what I don't want.
Should be on a need basis only.
I think that it should be sent.
Don't even want.
That's what I mean, I think it should be sent out to the departments, and if they wish.
No, we're not gonna say you get in a car, not actually, if the department head doesn't want one, no.
Right, that's what I mean, I think it just should be offered to all, not just pick and choose who gets it.
But, I do believe that our auditor should be notified that that office is getting one, so that there's gotta be some kind of.
Have to go through us.
They have to go through Carmen.
And you have one card already, so you have the process started to.
I am the administrator.
Right.
Period, and one person has to be the administrator, and that's the auditor. And then, we put people on, we watch them, I'm the one who has to go, see, separate people have to do it. Gwen takes care of her credit card, but I am separately pulling, every month, the list of the expenses, so everybody's expenses is gonna go on there, you know, and then let's look at your policy, but everybody's gotta put the vouchers in, they're gonna be responsible for the vouchers, because.
And I don't, this is like a, this is a big scary thing to make this step and start this, but it is, but if they can all be responsible, and Gwen does not chase after any of these bills, we're golden.
And I'm not.
It's gonna save the auditor's office.
And I'm not in any way.
It's, it's, it's time saved for Gwen to not have to. Do whatever else is work either.
And I'll be honest, this was something that I really didn't want, because it's an extra little item for me to keep track of, and I've got lots of criminal files to keep track of, and uh, you folks' stuff. It would just, when Shaw and I were booking these flights, well, then we gotta go get a hold of Carmen and Gwen, and then it just, it adds extra steps. And with some of these flight things, two minutes can make the difference of a hundred bucks on a flight. I, I don't like it, I think it's ridiculous, but, hmm, that's the world we live in.
Okay, let's uh, let's, uh, is, is there a motion to approve?
Do we need the motion before we get the policy? I have a draft policy, and I'll get you Carmen, what else is up to me?
I'd, I'd ask the commission to hold off.
I'd like to review it.
The policy and you approve it.
Solidify the policy, and then.
It can all be done in one motion.
Yeah, I don't think it needs to be like done in a second, it just needs to be started.
Anybody that would have a credit card, that could sign the agreement to, and Glady states on the half, and I think it's used that way.
Okay.
So, we'll get that two, three years ago.
At a thousand dollars, they're beat, ten thousand, executed.
I'm joking, of course, don't, don't fall in that damn league.
Okay, um, I have an ask, do you worry about, I think we'll build the administrative role, since it's an extension of this five week landfill operator, advertising, that is the position, um, can be asked if she, we could think about maybe doing a temporary position, since it's a full-time, it's all the rain and everything we have this summer. So I know what your wishes would be, as a commission to, working advertised for a temporary position for the landfill.
I'd make, I'd make a motion to add that for a temp position for the landfill.
I'll second that for discussion.
Holy cow. The chairman didn't even ask for a motion yet.
Sorry.
Okay, a motion to approve the landfill to.
Have a temporary.
Temporary, yeah, okay, that was Jamie and Travis.
Yep.
Any further discussion?
My only discussion was on it, is it in the budget, but if they're down a person, then essentially it is in the budget, so.
Okay.
That would be my only concern.
Well, realistically, the weather, wind and rain, we're gonna eventually get in trouble with the state for, for, so it may not be in the budget, but if we want to continue the day-to-day, we've gotta do something, so maybe we'll make a field trip to landfill, all five of us commissioners, we can go pick some garbage.
That's a good point.
Well, that's, that has an open meaning.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean, aye.
So, none of them need to discuss those, the wages for Elroy and Dennis in the Elroy's interim, different than Dennis', in terms of.
I guess I didn't look at anything different on Elroy's, but I thought Dennis would should be about thirty-four dollars, because he's less than the people that he was supervising.
So that would be a temporary rate wage adjustment, or is it?
Okay, so, and to me, how, how are we gonna go about this, are we going to keep Elroy on as hourly right now, or are we gonna? Uh, boy, do we have to advert, do we have to advertise, we don't have to advertise for that job.
For the interim, no, this is filling.
Yeah, we can appoint him. We can appoint him county road superintendent, if we wanted to.
I would recommend advertising for the full-time, just to meet all the wonderful requirements. I might be steering you.
Yeah, I can't disagree with that, but I'm just wondering, okay, well, then you answered my question, so then, then in the interim, we, he would stay hourly.
So currently, he's at thirty-six fifty-two. If I'm reading your wage thirty-nine, then what, Dennis is thirty-one seventy-nine?
Something like that, yeah.
Thirty-six fifty-two. And thirty-one seventy-nine.
That's current.
Current.
Uh, what's it just doing? You get a, you get a text in the middle of what you're doing, it messes you up. Well, the county road superintendent, uh, if you break it down by the hour, was, if I did my math right, it's about forty-four thirty-three. And right now, our assistant is making thirty-six fifty-two.
There's also an extra overtime, that would also, he's gonna get a little more there too.
Right.
My only question is, is, you know, is it a temporary range increase, and then, depending on what the ultimate changes are in that department, you know, that may become permanent, or taken away, depending on how you hire people, so.
What if we hire someone else as county road superintendent?
Right, so, what I'm saying is that, if we do a bump, it's, it's a temporary, and then say he gets it, then he becomes salary, then that's a moot point, but if he doesn't, and
I hate cutting.
People revert back to where they were, then that wage increase goes away. You know what I, you hear what I'm saying?
Yes.
I don't have a problem with.
What you just said, I'd, I'd be, well, I would say we keep him at his current hourly pay then, till we make a determination. Cause he, he would be currently making more than anyone else, and even if we move.
I guess I don't necessarily agree with that, because he is taking on additional duties.
I understand.
I, I, I get.
But what are we gonna do?
But I hate taking away pay.
Yeah.
Um, but I don't want it to be forgotten, and then it's not adjusted.
And Dennis, what is the recommended? I should go at least at thirty-two seventy-three, which is almost a dollar.
Are we going temporary, or, or not, what's that kind of, I was thinking one minus thirty-four, but, because he'd be a quarter over the operator.
Well, what if, what if we, just. Uh, what if we promote him to operator two, in the interim, and that way he would just stay in operator two until we make a decision on our road superintendent. That way we wouldn't be, um, reducing his salary in the future, he would just stay in operator two, which is the thirty-two seventy-three, it'd be about a dollar an hour pay raise. He, I don't know who, who's all operator. Oh gosh, I gotta.
I think just because his title, I mean, he's got mechanic title versus just operator.
Pardon?
I'm just gonna do this, I'll make a motion for a three-dollar temporary increase for Dennis and for Elroy. Okay, per hour. Say that again, straight, motion to, okay, so what are you giving to Dennis?
Three dollars.
Dennis and Elroy both, three dollars per hour, temporary, until per hour, temporary.
Effective.
Okay. Motion to raise three dollars an hour for Dennis, temporary. So that means he's gonna get it, and then you're taking it away from him. Well, then we could just, okay, then our summary motion will do it. Well, I mean, really, you're gonna give something to somebody.
But if they don't continue those duties.
They shouldn't continue to keep it.
Continue that pay, I mean, that's a very typical thing, if you're putting in an interim.
Internally, job description, interim superintendent, interim superintendent assistant.
Yeah.
And it was currently staying in there, if they are not chosen to continue with those roles, that three dollars an hour would go away, so that they would understand.
Yeah.
I'd say effective today.
I'll second that, you have a motion.
Yep. Jamie? Rick, any further discussion? Hearing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Rick? Travis?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Next.
One more thing Shaw brought up to me, like Senator Carmen, the current state, July fifth, this Friday, he did, um, there was a survey with the state's attorney's office.
Yeah, very informal, we had a couple of the state's attorneys, one of them emailed out what's happening across the state. State's attorneys convention is yesterday, today, and tomorrow. And, right now, it's looking like a, a majority are closed on the fifth. And, we haven't got a decision made on it. No decision means that the fourth is a working day. The commission decides to give that.
You mean the fifth?
The fifth.
Yeah, you said the fourth, but later still.
Because the fourth is on a Thursday, but, um, Shaw had an interesting response to that, she says, you know, we all go out and do things on the Fourth of July evening, you know, maybe we should work half a day on the fourth, and then take the day off, the, the day following off, but I, I don't know how that would work, since the fourth is a federal holiday, but, I'll be working either way. And I kinda need to know, because, um, the normal trial schedule has some trials on the fifth. We'd have to notify the judge here pretty quick to make schedule adjustments.
I think we just stay open on the fifth.
Well, if we don't make a motion, we don't change anything.
There you go. Okay, we'll be open the fifth. Anything else?
Hey, Alice, can I get a letter from you regarding that two dollars for Dennis, then that way we got it for payroll. Carmen, it's not just Dennis, it was Elroy too, oh, Dennis and Elroy.
Dennis and Elroy.
It was three dollars each.
Yes.
Correct.
Dollars each, okay, did you hear that? Yeah, but if we get the letters, that's, we need those.
Okay. Pardon?
Other business.
Yeah, 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 WRT phone upgrade bill.
Cause here's, we talked to Todd.
Yeah, I, I, I spoke with the folks from WRT when they were here last meeting. What we need to do in the meantime is make sure we're paying for our current, and they're working with us in regard to that installation. So I don't think we should be.
But the total installation, we added it up after taking everything off, the total installation is only nine thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
So, as far as the current bill.
And the departments that didn't get new installs are being billed in that nine thousand dollars? Right, and they weren't going. Cause it was still on, like Candy's bill. Took them off, we were working with them, and that showed on that bill.
So the nine, as her question was, that nine thousand, does that include the departments that didn't get updates that were being billed?
Every, everything, that like landfill didn't have one, that was taken off. The total that we came up with, that we have to pay for this, what they've done so far.
Got it.
Is nine thousand four hundred.
Got it, okay, so, tomorrow, it's Friday, I don't want someone jumping me saying, well, it's Saturday or Sunday. I'm using tomorrow as a open end it, the state has enough IPs to change out everything in the sheriff's department, or has it been done already? And then all those phones, get changed IP phones, is that included in the nine thousand?
No.
Okay.
This is everything they've done.
Want to clarify.
This is just the ones they've installed so far, but what I'm saying is our current monthly bill, we should be paying that.
And that was in our bills and we approved it.
And the way the original bill came, it had the installation fees included with the monthly bill.
And my understanding is they did some adjusting.
We took out, everything with install was taken out, the only thing you guys approved today was the monthly bill.
Right, but on the previous bill that was not approved.
Right.
West River.
We still have a monthly.
And your department worked on it.
That was included on today's bill.
There were some, there were some adjustments made.
So since we approved that one today, we are up to date as regular full bills.
Okay, do I have a motion?
No, do we need, it's just clarification, or just, so it's, are we, you're asking for a motion if we're gonna pay for the installation prices, or?
That's, I think.
Well, I thought we withheld that bill.
We withheld the bill, but then she said that. We withheld the bill, but then she said that it had, had both months of our normal reoccurring bill, we haven't paid the install bill.
Yeah. So, we approved the regular home bills.
What do we owe yet?
The only thing we have left now is to approve, cause Todd said, too, it's up to you guys, we only have nine thousand four hundred and fifty dollars of install bill, and we need a motion from you guys to decide.
That's what I was saying.
Where, where does that nine thousand dollars come from?
That is the install...
No, I, no, I know, but what...
We're out of the budget.
Who is paying for that, because I don't feel like our departments, because they didn't know anything about it, they did not budget nine thousand.
They did get it budgeted, we did budget it into theirs, we discussed it at the budget, that's why we held it up.
Okay, well, that's, I just, wanna make sure that it's not putting people over because they didn't know about it.
Right.
Okay.
I will move to approve the West River bill in the amount that Carmen stated was currently installed.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Travis?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, since my vote ain't gonna matter. Otherwise, I would probably recuse myself, but, um, let's do me, sheriff's fees, seventy-five thousand five hundred twenty-four dollars thirteen cents, motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the fees at seventy-three, five, twenty-four, thirty...
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Rick, how do you vote? Travis?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
G nine?
Make a motion to approve that Dakota Walleye Classic Liquor Request, still so...
Okay, you have a second?
I'll second.
Um, any discussion? Hearing none, Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
G nine? Library board, board appointments?
All we got is Martha.
Yeah, I'm going to reappoint Martha, correct, cause she's currently on there.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Are that, is that just the one?
That's all I got, I got nothing else.
And then, as the commission, mine is up too, so we'd have to reappoint me, if, if...
But you, you can't, you termed out, I thought. Oh, that's a different one.
That's a different one, I can do two consecutive terms in their three-year terms.
Oh, so we have to reappoint you to the library?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do I approve Travis?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, we got a motion on the floor right now.
Do Martha's first.
Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry, Martha.
Let's, let's approve the first motion to appoint, what was her name?
Martha.
Martha. Okay, Jamie?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
G nine? Okay, now to reappoint Travis on library board, you have a motion?
So, if...
I'm second.
Okay, I'll make the motion for Travis, but then I have a discussion after.
Yep.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
So, Travis, say you don't get re-liked to come November, can you still hold that library board, is that a discussion we have to have?
No, then you'd reappoint, because I can only serve on that board as a commissioner, as a commissioner.
I'm just making sure it wasn't a Marvin situation of...
No, and if, uh, there was an opening, and I still wanted to serve on the library board, I could in that capacity.
Okay.
So...
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
G nine? Uh, portfolio updates.
I'll go.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm currently missing the social services meeting, cause it's today, cause it's Thursday. Um, Candy's, they're currently bailing steel at the landfill right now, like I said before, um, rain and wind have not been her friend, she had a breakdown on the, I think it was loader, I think we got that fixed, so there's an opening at the landfill, temporary and full-time. Um, building's been pretty quiet, the chillers are in, the new lights, I think, are all done, these are new lights, and everywhere else has new lights, so, uh, L E P C is next week, I think that's it.
Travis?
Uh, P and Z met on Monday, uh, we had one thing on the docket, it'll, it'll be coming, I don't even know if it'll come to the commission, I'm trying to remember what it was, but, there is a, um, they're requesting some changes to the gravel pit ordinance, um, so that'll be coming to the commission to review. Um, library board, uh, meets on Monday, and Lewis and Clark, um, had their annual meeting earlier this week, everything's looking good there, and, um, uh, that's all the updates I got.
Okay, Rick?
Uh, well, Rose, uh, some of it you already heard, um, we do have a, a stockpile that's at the landfill, and we are gonna, and we are gonna stockpile some more there, so she has access, so she don't have to sit and wait all the time.
Prove story to be hope.
Yeah, so we don't have to sit there, uh, we're working on, uh, gravel, um, tomorrow with TerraCon, uh...
And that contract got signed?
Yeah, I finally got that signed, so...
And you're gonna be doing that possibly tomorrow?
That's what the plan, I'm waiting to get it timed. We also have another one, what, we might stop over to, uh, Shreefer's, we'll look at that one, and, uh, we'll bring another one, we're gonna put a bid in, uh, not a bid, but a request to the commission for TerraCon and another gravel, salsa hazen, too.
Okay.
That'll be next meeting. What else, let's see, fair board meeting we had last night, we put the final touches on, pretty much, we got Gates, uh, looking for gate help yet, um, we're pretty much ready with the fair, I haven't, haven't been to the extension office in a while, and, um, sheriff department, other than, we have some damage to the car.
They got, they got the three new vehicles, though.
They got what?
They got three new vehicles.
Vehicles, yeah.
And one made it three days before it got damaged.
Did we at least get license plates on it? Cause I noticed we approved that.
I think they did.
And yes, it's been reviewed, the damage, nobody acted inappropriately from the sheriff's department, they were doing their job, I'll just leave it at that.
So, it's, it'll be handled by insurance?
Yep.
There was something else he had to ask, too, but, oh, that, um, he did mention, too, that, that we should think about it, but they're looking at, uh, hiring another jailer that they don't have, or they don't have an opening right now, he'd like to hire and train, um, because there is one leaving on Jan, July first, and, uh, rather than waiting and, he has, had an opportunity to hire somebody from Hazen, and he wanted to know, make sure we were all right with that.
Female, and we're lacking some female staff that we're required, that he's required to have on staff for the jail.
The one that's leaving is a female officer who got a job with a lot less stuff to deal with, I'll just leave it at that.
I don't know if we need a motion to approve that or not.
Not really.
It's not gonna go over his budget or anything like that, it's just, uh, he wanna know if we're okay with that, so...
Yeah.
I think it's just good business to get ready, rather than wait till after the fact.
Yep.
Okay.
I think that's it.
Now, let me do one for you on the state's attorney. You, you will notice this summer, there's gonna be a very nice-looking young man who's gonna be following me around, his name is Ben Guthmiller, uh, he's a high school student, he's a senior, uh, mama must've dropped him on his head, he wants to be a lawyer. When I was in high school and made that decision, there was a lawyer who took the time with me, and told me how I repay him, just to do exactly what I'm doing, and I've been gladly repaying that for over thirty years. Fine young man, uh, I think he's actually gonna be very helpful.
Okay, that's my state's attorney portfolio report.
Okay. I just didn't watch you shocked at this.
No, that's, that's, I know, I'm sure we're all fine, I'm fine.